And I also wanted to let you know, particularly those of you who are interested in the pool, I got a phone call from County Councilmember George Leventhal this afternoon, who said that he and Valerie Irvin, who's our representative on the county council, are quite concerned about the Piney Branch pool issue. And that he is going, he and, his staff and Valerie's staff are going to pull together a meeting of staff members and elected officials, both at the county and at the city level. They, they understand that there's a timeliness issue here and they're going to try and do it as soon as possible to discuss options for the pool. So, I did talk to him this afternoon. I did want to let you know that he is concerned about it and he is working on trying to find a solution. Since the facility is owned by the county, that's exactly the right level to have that concern. And so there are people who are going to be working on it. I just had my conversation with him this afternoon. I don't know, you know, we will pull together the meeting as soon as people's schedules allow, but he is working on that and Valerie Irvin also. So, I thought you might be interested to hear about that. Are there any other comments or announcements? Yes?
I have two comments. One is about dogs and the other one's about the pool. I'm going to do the dog one first. I just wanted to make the other councilmembers aware, in case they weren't already, that there was an incident involving a dog in my ward and a young man was seriously injured. The dog was a pit bull and the, the young man was about 15. And he spent four days in the hospital with infection and, kind of uncertain what the long-term outcome is for regaining full use of his, of his arm. And there is, there's, there is an interest from several folks about addressing, possibly addressing a breed-specific ban in the city, taking some kind of, of an action. And so I just wanted to let you know that this is likely to come up as an issue in the near future and also that I made the city manager aware of this so that she could get the appropriate background information for when this, this does come up. And I think it will come up. I'd like to welcome all the kids from the Young Activist Club, from Piney Branch Elementary School, and the other folks who are here in the, in the audience regarding the pool issue. As you may or may not be aware, the YMCA has opted out of its agreement to run the Piney Branch pool. And the pool was to be drained yesterday. I am aware that the Recreation Department has participated in a meeting with the school, the county, and the Y regarding the pool. And at this time, the pool has been closed indefinitely by the Montgomery County Public School System. I am interested in maintaining the, the pool as a city resource and I have been since I was elected. I'm aware that there's a hesitancy on the part of the city to get involved with the operations of the pool because of the long history of underuse by the community and because of the great expense that's involved in operating a swimming pool. I've been in contact with the Montgomery County Public School Real Estate Office, who actually has jurisdiction over the pool, the Piney Branch Elementary School Principal. I went to the Piney Branch Elementary School PTA meeting, which wasn't really a hardship since my daughter attends school there. And so, I've spoken to several other elected, elected officials and, including colleagues on the council. I would like the city to help further the discussion regarding the reopening of the pool and negotiate with the county and the school towards keeping the pool operational. And if they were to come up with a solution where the city were to operate the pool, to work towards an agreement with MCPS that included access to the PBS gym, PBEs gym as well. I attended a PBEs PTA meeting where the pool was discussed and invited the parents and the Young Activist Club, many of them are here in the audience tonight, as well as other interested parties, to make a brief statement during the open comments of tonight's meeting. I recognize that the city does not have the resources to operate and maintain the pool in its current condition and I have expressed those, to those interested in maintaining the pool, that the county and/or other school resources will be required if we are to come to a successful resolution in this manager. I think, in this matter, I think this is a great civics lesson for our young activists as well and I hope that the council will provide support and guidance to them, as this is only the first step in their effort. One of the kids came up to me beforehand and asked if it was the city council that made the decision about keeping the pool open. And, and it's not. The city council doesn't, doesn't own the pool. The Montgomery County Public School System owns the pool. But I think, as you heard the mayor say, you know, there's some interest from, at least three of the county council members at this point. I know we have some support from various folks within the public school system and not as much support from others. But this is really just the first step in your journey and we're probably the easiest sell. So, I just wanted to let you guys know that. And I'm glad that you all came. Thank you.
Good evening, young activists and the more senior activists in the crowd. Just like to give you the fourth in our series of the beautification of Tacoma Park, keep Tacoma Park beautiful. The format is question and answer and the question submitted to me tonight is, can you park a car on your front lawn? The answer is, generally, no. The cars on front lawns are ugly. People don't like to look out their window and see cars on beautiful grass and it's probably not very good for the grass. Are there exceptions to this? Yes, there are. According to code, if you put gravel down on your lawn, then you can park your car on it. And if that seems a little counterintuitive to you, it certainly sounds the same to me. And in fact, in our area, there are a number of people who have taken advantage of this provision in the law, have put gravel down on their front lawn, and then proceeded to park a car on their front lawn. So this evening, I'm going to ask the city manager if she will ask staff to research a little bit the history of this law and the provision in it that allows gravel to be put on the lawn and then the car to be parked on top of that. And maybe to come back to us in a reasonable period of time and let us know what options might be available to us. And that's number four, keep Tacoma Park beautiful. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. It is nice to see a roomful of people when we come back into session. So, thanks for being here. And I agree that the, the pool really does need to remain a resource in our community. So, I'm, I'm happy to join with you in making sure that we do get it opened back up. I, I think the county can give us the access if, if they give it to anyone. And I, I think it's certainly the role that the city should play. And the other update I want to give to residents is about the metro development. Since the council has been on recess for the last month, we've had a couple of productive activities on the metro development issue. The mayor and I and Sabrina Barron and Councilmember Valerie Irvin met with Muriel Bowser, who's the DC council member that replaced Adrian Fenty as the Ward Four representative. And I, I believe it was a productive meeting. We established that we are interested in working on this collaboratively and not in an antagonistic fashion, but it is important for the Maryland perspective to be heard and definitely factored in, in ways that it hasn't been in the past. We had the walk-through in May with Ike Leggett of the metro site. Then following that, I was pleased to see that EYA had come forward with some changes in response to the county's Department of Public Works that let them know there were some problems with their design. And so, at least we're, we're making progress. We're starting to see some changes where none were forthcoming before. WAMADA, the Metro Transit Authority, has now issued a staff report from last October's compact hearing. And this staff report does allow a time for public comment. So that time is between now and early October. I think the city manager can help this council by getting the city attorney to thoroughly review this report and look for ways that we can find entry points that will make sure our views are recognized and that some changes are made that are remaining to be done. I also think the, the city council should take up this issue. We've had the Business Association make a statement recently. They were very active in the walk-through with Ike Leggett. And for the city council to then receive the Business Association report as well as review the Metro Transit Authority report is critical. The timing is very limited and, and we need to do that between now and October when comments are due.
Just as a follow-up for that, the council is scheduled to have a closed session discussion on the metro issue next week.
Yeah, I just wanted to briefly note something that was very important that happened while we were on break during August. The city staff pulled together an excellent New Hampshire Avenue design charrette where there were some, some wonderful professionals who came in and, in concert with a number of residents and business owners for the, concentrating on the section of New Hampshire Avenue from Eastern Avenue all the way up to Sligo Creek, looked at how to envision a different New Hampshire Avenue and looking not only at the commercial areas, but how to make that much more neighborhood-oriented and development of housing and kind of a new master plan for New Hampshire Avenue. And there were some very interesting ideas put forward and the, they're going to flesh those out and come back with some more information and some timetables and some things for us to look at. And I believe that they'll probably come back to the, with that information sometime mid to late fall. And the council will then begin to look at some steps that could be taken to have newly rejuvenated and revived New Hampshire Avenue corridor, which is one of the areas of the city that I think most needs that and has the greatest potential. So, for anybody who might be interested in what could happen along New Hampshire Avenue, stay tuned. We should be getting more information and getting back into that.
Thank you, Mayor Porter. I just want to applaud the young activists for coming out here tonight and for your work in trying to save the pool at the school. I, I first became aware of the Young Activist Club when a few members came here to the council chambers to talk about global warming and the need for attention to the climate change issues. I think this issue that you have here tonight is something that, that you can learn a lot from on how you deal with those other bigger issues like global warming. And that is that it, the outreach that you did with your parents' help this week to this council has already made a, had an effect because you had councilmembers scrambling around to talk to county council and, and other school board members to find out what can we do, what can we promise or, you know, how, who do we talk to to make a change? So your work is already having an effect on this issue. I just wanted to caution you that this isn't something that is going to be decided by any one group. It's something that's going to take some cooperation between the city council, the county council, the school board, and maybe some other groups. And the, the other thing is, it isn't something that's going to, any one group is going to decide instantly. We can't decide, tell you tonight that we're going to keep the pool open or that we're going to, to close the pool. It's something that takes time, it takes work, and it takes your going and, and talking with many different organizations to make it happen. And the reason I point that out to you is because I'm really impressed with the Young Activist Club and, and bringing your friends here tonight and your parents here tonight to work on a very important issue to you here locally. And what you learn through this process, as we talk about the pool, you need to think about for the bigger process of climate change and global warming and those bigger issues because those are bigger, they'll take more time and more organizations, but you really can make a change. You've already made a change tonight because you heard Mayor Porter say that she's talked with the county, right? So you've already had an effect. By doing this work, I applaud you because you are having an effect on our community and I thank you.
Thank you. I too, sorry, I guess it's the last here. I too support the pool effort. Colleen and I talked briefly about it and she has a number of ideas, several of which I already support. For working to keep the pool open, and I agree with Terry, this is not a one-shot deal. I applaud the fact that you're here tonight, but I hope you will remember what Terry said, that this is going to take a little while to make it happen. The city can't do it, the county isn't going to do it. We need, we need your help and support to push for it. I don't want to belabor this too long. The other thing I wanted to say is that during the recess, I had an opportunity to talk to lots of people in my ward, actually lots of people around Tacoma Park, a lot of them from my ward. And they gave me, as they usually do, lots of ideas for things, for things to work on this session. I'm sure the other council members had the same experience. One of the fun things about Tacoma Park is, we have a lot of people who care about their community. And I, I have to say that the people I talked to weren't quite as young as most of the people in, in the auditorium tonight, but I hope you will keep that in mind, that when you have an idea, Tacoma Park is the kind of place where you can talk to your council members, you can talk to your neighbors, and something will happen. It's a, it's a really cool kind of thing.
All right. There, we have no additional agenda items this evening, so the next item is the public comment period. This is the time that's set aside on the council's agenda for comments on items that are not on our regular meeting agenda. Since we don't have a regular meeting agenda, we do not have another time for comments. We do however have a presentation, which is coming up later, on the traffic calming studies. I would ask, if you have general comments on traffic calming or on the studies, I'd ask if you'd make those comments now. After the, the presentation, I'll entertain questions specifically on the presentation itself. So if there's something, people have informational questions or thoughts on what was contained in the presentation, that would be the appropriate time. But if you have general traffic calming issues that you'd like to bring to the council, now would be the appropriate time to do it. I'd ask when you come to the microphone that you would introduce yourself and let us know who you are. And also, if you would keep your comments to three minutes, that would be appreciated. We have a great many people here this evening and I want to make sure that we have an opportunity to hear from everyone. So I'd ask if you could keep your comments to three minutes. Yes, Ed?
My name is Ed Sharp. I live at 906 Glazewood Court. I'd like to talk quickly to the council about the council compensation discussion that you had in July. I'd like to point out to the council, in particular, the ordinance that established the standards for council compensation and particularly item seven in the ordinance, that compensation for the mayor and council should be comparable to Maryland municipalities of similar size and complexity. My perception, listening to the two meetings in July, that that point has not been given sufficient attention by the council in the discussions. You've considered other bases for deciding how the council should be compensated, but the, the one standard that's in the ordinance hasn't really been addressed in any detail by anybody. The council compensation committee report that you had in front of you doesn't provide any of the data that would allow that comparison to occur. I don't know if you've gotten other materials from them on the side, but there's nothing in that report that addresses that. If, if you go back to the, the report that was done in 2002 on the committee that Terry Siemens and I served on, since the basis of our discussion was comparing other municipalities to Tacoma Park, the methodology for making that comparison is in there. It can be done in several ways, just in absolute terms, it can be done on the basis of per capita expenditures for mayor and council salaries, it can be done on the basis of expenditure for mayor and council salaries, on the basis of budget. But there are different ways that can be done and I think the council needs to address that to meet the standards that you put in the ordinance. Last, I don't like to mix my messages generally, but on the Piney Branch pool, Park and Planning owns the ballfields at Blair High School. The school system used to own them and they decided they didn't, weren't able to maintain them very well, so they turned it over to Park and Planning. Can't say that Park and Planning is the easiest organization in the world to deal with, so don't know that I necessarily recommend that as an alternative, but it's better than, I guess, maybe than having the pool shut down if they're, if they're in the position of doing that. Thanks.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Rob Valente. I'm from Ward Three. And I actually was just holding a place for somebody who's about to speak, but since the question was asked about the committee and I was on the compensation committee, we did indeed look at all that data. And the committee discussed it and decided that other factors needed to be involved and perhaps, maybe even the ordinance should be rewritten so that other factors can be involved, that that was too limited. So that was just a response to that.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Stuart Baum. I live on 13 Devon Road and I'm here in support of the Piney Branch pool. A number of years ago, I was diagnosed with MS and, as you may or may not know, it doesn't, there isn't any cure for that, this illness. But I found that by going to the pool and swimming every morning, that it really helped to maintain my stamina and mobility. So I'm really, I was really shocked and hurt that the pool was, that they had closed it. It has, this particular pool has easy access for me to get to, it's close to where I live. The pool itself has a nice grade in the water, so I can not only swim in there and do laps, but then I can later walk around and use it to sort of help maintain my mobility and my legs. I also know that there are other people that I don't know are here today that were also using the pool and we would have our discussions and they would also say how beneficial in terms for their health that the pool was. So I'm, I'm hoping that we can come together and come to some, some plan that will help keep the pool going. It really has been instrumental in keeping, in keeping me afoot or keeping me moving. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Deb Gordon. I live at 7501 Central Avenue and that's in between Davis and Jackson in the Long Branch-Sliggo Creek neighborhood. I want to make a comment, a general comment, on why the issue of traffic calming is so difficult. I was sitting on my front deck on a day in the summer, middle summer, one of the few days when there weren't a lot of road utility vehicles parked and acting like speed slower downers on my block. And a school bus carrying children came along Jackson, hung a left on Central and went up to Carroll at a great speed and not bothering to stop at the stop signs, the four-way stop signs there. Now, that's not an unusual occurrence, but I was shocked that it was also a school bus. I, I, I know for a fact that putting up stop signs does not calm traffic and it certainly doesn't calm our school buses. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for this opportunity. I'm Sue Katz Miller. I live at 12 Montgomery Ave in Tacoma Park. As co-president of the Piney Branch PTA, I was elected to represent over a thousand local residents and teachers. Piney Branch is the place where the Tacoma Park vision becomes a reality. It's where our children actually meet and make friendships across the lines of race, socioeconomic status, and language. Our school is very close to equal parts African-American, African immigrant, Hispanic, and white families. A large cohort of our students come from Maple Avenue and our school forms the porous boundary, both physically and metaphorically, between the Maple Avenue Apartments and the Tacoma Park City Government. Piney Branch opened in 1971 as a bold experiment in community-school partnership, housing neighborhood services including dental and health clinics. The pool is the last vestige of this dream, providing a unique benefit to the community through the school and after-school swim program until last Friday. For many local kids, swimming in the Piney Branch pool during gym class has been their first and only experience with swimming. For many residents without cars, it is the only accessible pool. The moment has come for the city to reclaim this idealistic vision of school as community center, to join in a real partnership with the school system and county and to prevent the terrible possibility of becoming the city with the dead pool at its heart. I know that repairing and maintaining the pool will require a new level of collaboration and support between the city and county. And the PTA is already working with county officials to make this happen. But we need to think a moment about the alternative. To shutter the pool and let it deteriorate will have far-reaching consequences. Piney Branch is stuck with a dour brick building, very few windows, no land. The one exceptional physical asset it has is the pool. The pool, as frivolous as it may seem, is a significant draw for both students and parents in choosing to stay at the community elementary school. With a dead pool as an appendage, I sincerely fear that we will tip the delicate balance that is a school's reputation. And the reputation of any community rests in large part on the reputation of its schools. For years, the pool has been underutilized because the community has been unaware that the pool exists, unsure how and when they could use it, and there's been no outreach programming. All of this in spite of the fact that we pay substantial taxes for county recreation. Would local private pools use the pool in the winter if the pool was better publicized and managed? Could we recruit volunteers to teach adult non-swimmers how to swim? Could we have a Maple Avenue swim team that might someday inspire a movie, Imagine? We in Tacoma Park are proud of our diversity and our exceptional cohesion as a community. The pool can and should be an embodiment of these values, a city resource at our center, providing opportunity for recreation, physical therapy, and skill-building for all. The PTA stands ready to do anything and everything we can and to take this to every relevant county official in order to preserve and enhance our pool. Please don't disappoint our children. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Heather Demacher from the fourth grade at Piney Branch. And I wanted to talk to you a little bit about the students' version of how we feel about the pool. This is all from the point of the student's view. And first, I wanted to let you know how many people are here to save the pool. So if you're here to save the pool, can you raise your hand? That's a lot. Okay, hands down. So, I wanted to tell you, I was really excited that my school had a pool when I was in third grader. But now, but now I'm in the fourth grader. So, I thought that this was my year to pass the swimming test so I could go into the deep end of the pool. So, and when I heard that the pool was going to be closed, so I really want you to save the pool. And the reason that I didn't choose not to go to Pinecrest, which is a private school for different kids and, well, all sort of, all sorts of kids. And the reason that I chose to save Piney Branch, because I had a choice, was because that the school had a pool. And I'm really upset that the school's, that the pool's closing. And, and I have a friend here who's in third grade who's going to tell us how she feels about how the pool is going to be closed.
Thank you, Heather.
Hi, I'm Leah Savage from Piney Branch also. But I'm from third grade. And I just wanted to tell you that I really love Piney Branch and part of the reason I do is because it has a pool. My sister said that the pool is great and I've actually been in it a few times and it's really great. I love it. So, if they take down the pool, then a lot of students will be really sad because everybody really loves the pool. And as Heather said, like, most of the people here are here because the pool is getting drained. So, I just want to say that there's a lot of people out there who really like the pool. And if they tear it down, then all those people will just really be sad. And I'm actually one of them. So, here's Keegan. She's going to tell you a little about, a little bit about the petition.
Well, thank you.
My name is Keegan Rutter Clay from Piney Branch Elementary School. I'm in fourth grade and we have put together a petition to save the pool. Here, you put your signature, your name, your street address, city and state. You, you are a kid and you want to sign and you, for Piney Branch and you want to sign, you don't have to put your signature, just put your name. And if you don't know your street address, you don't have to. But if you are a Piney Branch student, check off the first box with a check where it says PBS student. If you're not a PBS student, you can check off the last one and put your phone number so they can contact you. so they can contact you if we need to. But you don't have to if you don't want to. But we are doing the petition to get as many signatures as we can and then we're gonna turn it in and see if we can, um, get the city to run the pool. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much, girls. You did a good job.
We have, uh, we, um, have about in the seven hundreds of signatures.
Well, very good.
That should be enough to persuade someone or something to keep the pool open.
I, I would be happy to take all of the petitions with me when I meet with George Leventhal and Valerie Irvin and all of the other people so they'll know how much concern there is in the community about the pool. That's a very good thing that you all did. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Nate Hugel. I'm a tenth grader Montgomery Blair High School. I'm, uh, I'm on the swim team. And last winter, it was my first year on the swim team. So we had our, all of our practices at Piney Branch and it was, it really suited our team well. It was a perfect fit for us and we had the locker rooms. Everything worked out nice for us. So, um, I'd like to say that if the pool got closed down, we would have to have, we would have to find another pool that, that would fit us for a pretty large team. And, um, it's really hard for high school teams to find space during the winter because there's so many of them and they need a lot of space. So, um, I'd like to say that we should keep the pool.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Katie Daniels in nineteen Sherman Avenue and I'm a former swim coach from Montgomery Blair High School. I've been associated with Piney Branch Pool since nineteen seventy-three and I know that's a long time. I've seen the pool go through many phases of operations. In the nineteen seventies and nineteen eighties, the aquatics programming, in my opinion, was second to none in the entire country. The pool was in operation sixteen hours a day from our early bird swim, the swim lesson program, water aerobics, the MCRD, year-round swim team, the Masters Program, which we started, were all Montgomery County Recreation Programs, not to mention Operation Fourth Grade in the county where all fourth graders participated in a swim lesson program during the school day at three different locations, Piney Branch being one of them. For the last thirty-five years, Piney Branch Pool has been a very important part of our community and it would be a shame to close the pool down for good. By the way, good luck demolishing Piney Branch Pools. Pools just aren't built anymore as well as Piney Branch is built. Nothing is built the way Piney Branch was built. I know the gentlemen who built it. I've worked on the pool. The shell is over a foot thick. The surface is also tiled. Tiled pools don't exist anymore and haven't existed for over twenty years. I'll be available to discuss some ideas I have to keep Piney Branch Pool operational, at least on a limited schedule for the community. For instance, years ago, we discussed partnerships between Montgomery County Education Department, Tacoma Park, CUC, and the Washington Adventist Hospital. Piney Branch with its physical layout would be an excellent rehabilitation pool. But with my knowledge of the pool, its history, its aquatic programming, equipment needs, chemical supplies, and staffing, I'll be glad to help any way I can, the community, the council, and Montgomery County. But let's, let's please not keep, close the pool. Let's keep it open. Thank you. And if we keep it open, I will start swimming again because my doctor's gonna kick my tail if I don't.
Hi, I'm Margaret Bowman and I'm in Ward Three, Bruce Williams Ward on Hancock Avenue. I am a member of the Master Swim Program. We swim at Daleview Pool in the summer and in the winter we swim, or we used to swim, at the Piney Branch Pool. And there are several other people here from Master Swim who may want to talk. But unfortunately, now we're scrambling to find an alternative location and it is hard to find a pool lanes available for a Master Swim Program. Master Swim Program, if you don't know, is a program for those of us a little older than some of the people in the front row here who swim with a coach for exercise. And it's hard to rent lanes at other pools around here and so it's going to be a loss for the Master Swim Program to, to lose Piney Branch Pool. So another component of Tacoma Park and the surrounding areas that uses the pool and appreciates it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name's Pat Lovelace, seventy-six twenty Maple Avenue, Ward Four. And I'd like to, uh, I'd like to say for one thing that, you know, as far as the pool is concerned, you know, we cannot, I don't think we should sit back and let them take it away. They're shutting a hospital down, other resources are being shut down. And I, and I'm glad to see that Tacoma Park is not gonna sit back and let them take another resource away from us. I'm glad to see that people are standing up, the Young Activist Club. I'm glad to see them. You know, Tacoma Park has shown that once, once somebody crosses a certain line, the activists get going. I'm glad to see that. Now, next Saturday, activists are gonna be getting together again. We're gonna be down in the north, north side of Lafayette Park, gathering to march against the war in Iraq on the fifteenth, Saturday, the fifteenth of September. We'll be marching against the war in Iraq. Another thing that we need as many people to be active as possible on. We've been working on this for the past five and a half years now and we're gonna continue on until, as long as we have to. You know, and, uh, we're gonna be having a die-in down at the Capitol. So we need as many people out there as possible. You know, again, a lot of our money's being wasted. Now, another thing we gotta do is, Election Day's coming up soon. We gotta get people to register to vote. You know, we gotta get, I wanna see Ward Four out there, all of them. I wanna see Tacoma Park out there, all of them, out there voting. And as you know, as you well know, my councilmember Terry Siemens has been serving the people. He's been doing a lot to help the elderly and handicapped, as well as me, survive in the city. You know, and, uh, I wanna see him back. I wanna see him continuing on the city council. I wanna see him allowed to continue the work he's, he's been doing because him and his wife Joyce have been helping with the food packages. A lot of us, we, we wouldn't be getting the nutrition we're getting now if it wasn't for them. If it wasn't for the mannequin package and if it wasn't for the, uh, for the, uh, very dedicated work that Terry and his wife are doing. And we need to have him on the city council. And I'd like to see everybody, activists or non-activists, get out there, register to vote. We need your vote. We need the people's vote. Stand up for what is just and what is right. You know, we've, we've been doing work against the war, against the death penalty and we're doing everything we can to make our city a better place. And like Terry said, a lot of what we wanna do is gonna take a long time. We just don't wanna just show up once and give up, like the pool. We just don't wanna just give up on one time. It's gonna take a lot of people, a lot of concerted effort. We've got to stand up and do it. You know, it's like the, like the, like the war in Iraq. It's like, like, uh, the death penalty, it's like other issues. I've been doing this, uh, social justice for over thirty years now. If you ever see this big peace sign around, you know who it is. I've been doing it for over thirty years and will continue doing it thirty more if I have to.
Thank you, Pat.
Thank you very much. Now let's everybody get out there and do what's right for Tacoma Park. Thank you.
Thank you, Pat.
Hi, I'm Robbie Fitzpatrick and, um, I just wanna say that I really want the pool to come, to stay open because, um, it, it, when I go here, I really like to go swimming and I really like going off the slides and diving into the pool with my friends. And I just wanted to say that, um, the pool's really great and I'd like if it stayed open. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Kaye Daniels-Cowen, nineteen Sherman Avenue, Tacoma Park, Maryland. And I just found out about this last night, signed the petition. I've been in, I'm an old activist, alright? A very old activist. I've been in, uh, in the swimming business since nineteen fifty-seven. I've probably managed, um, oh, at least five or six community swimming pools, including the Jewish Community Center of Greater Washington. I just sat down last night, wrote down, went away when I found out about it, brainstormed with myself, not even with my brother. And, uh, I came up with just a whole list of programs and I'm offering my services to you, Mayor Porter, and to the city council. I'm happy to come up with a program that, that you can present to Mr. Leventhal and Ms. Irvin, Irving. So, uh, I'm, I'm happy to do that for you. It's pretty easy to do. Let's see, I, I think part of the issue, I, someone said "underused." I'm not sure that it's been marketed. I, I'm not positive about that, but I, I'm not sure that it's, the pool itself has actually been marketed to the community and it may have been. I've only been back, I started in Tacoma Park in forty-six, but I've only been actually back in the city for the last year. So, uh, but I haven't, I haven't left, my, my heart was always here. So there you go. I'm offering my services. I think in the law, law business, it's pro bono. Is that what they say? Is that called free?
Yes.
I'm happy to give you all any, any, any assistance that you, you need. And Buddy Daniels also, he's been in the pool business, not as long as I because I am the older sister.
Okay, thank you, Kaye. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Dylan Goldville and, uh, the pool is important to all the kids in Piney Branch because when we came, we were expecting there to be a pool we could always swim in and count on to be there. And now, when I told everybody it was gonna be shut down, they were all really sad. And we, like, the pool, we don't want it to be shut down. Thanks.
Thank you.
Um, my name's Ben Miller. I'd like to ditto everything that all the people protesting for the pool have said. In addition, um, I'd like you to think about the third graders who are coming in as well as the fourth and fifth, um, coming into Piney Branch. They thought, oh, well, we're gonna be in big school now that has a pool and we wouldn't, that wouldn't be good if it was no longer available. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Um, my name's Graham and, uh, we're in-
Ward Two.
Um, my name is Caleb. I think that we should save the pool because while there are third graders that haven't even swum in the pool and there are sisters and brothers who have heard many stories about the pool and think that it's great. Fifth graders should also be able to swim in the pool because it's gonna be their last day at Piney Branch and they should be, well, not their last day, but their last year, and they should be able to enjoy it by swimming in the pool.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, my name is Ben and, um, well, me and my friends, we love swimming together and if the pool's shut down, I'll never, like, if you go to a regular pool, you might not see your friends there and stuff like that. But if you're out of school, you'll see your friends and be able to swim with them. Uh, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Julia. I'm a seventh grader at Tacoma Park Middle School. And this weekend, I was, um, up at Old Town and I met up with a friend and she told me about the Piney Branch Pool and we were all bummed because it was so sad. And for the rest of our little get-together up in Tacoma, we were relishing in our memories and we'd go, oh, remember when we used to jump off the fly? And it was really, really fun and we're gonna miss it, so we hope it stays.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Hanina and I like the pool.
This is my, my five-year-old daughter and next to me is Yara, who was in third grade. She just joined the Piney Branch School. And last night, uh, uh, you forgot something?
In Pine Branch, it's like a pool.
Uh, so my, my, uh, older child last night was concerning, expressing his concern about the pool. And what he said to me was, could you please tell the council and the mayor not to close the, the pool? And I said, you gotta do it yourself. In fact, you have to join, now that you're going to the Piney Branch Elementary School, you have to join the young, the young activists club because I know they're, they're working with this issue. So the discussion went to, how do I join, you know, and all that. Okay, first of all, I would like to recognize this young, vibrant, energetic group. I like, I, I take it very seriously in this time and age where the world is lacking leadership. In fact, we're in a big mess because we lack legionaries, honest leadership. Seeing this young activist rising up is just a point of inspiration to me personally. And I pledge publicly, not only I'm gonna support you and the pool, on every cause, I'm gonna be with you, beside you, supporting you. I'm really impressed, I'm really proud of you. Keep it up. Okay, on a serious note, a while back, the, I, I am a member of the Tacoma Park Community Action Group and we did a survey to identify the need of the community. And one of the, the concern with public safety. The public safety is created by the perception that young kids in the neighborhood don't have anything to do. In fact, we approach them, we have a dialogue with them. And one of the concerns that they have is nowhere to go, nothing to do. These are fourteen, thirteen, fifteen-years-old kids with a lot of energy. So, and right now, we're in discussion. Right now, we're top, we're trying to tap into the resources in the community. We're talking to people with resources to see if there is any, any possibility, leave alone taking the pool. We need more, we need a gymnasium. And at the time, when it, when you needed a gymnasium and taking the pool, it's just unbearable and it is unimaginable. So I know, um, it's a matter of resource, but like they say, when there is a will, there's a way. And whatever you can do on your part, we are behind you and whatever it takes, we're with you. And I urge you to listen to the voice of the innocent, the voice of the leaders that we have and take a measure in the right direction. On a separate matter, I'd like to also share a positive experience. For the last four years, a local NGO called Impact Silver Spring has, has been working with parents to get parents, get involved in the children's school, training the parents to help their kids with school and communicate, to communicate with the, with the school system. And they have been, we've been, uh, they've been actively involved in their children's school. And last year, most of the kids, most of the parents who, who are participating in this, in this program, their kids are, are showing a tremendous progress and the school, uh, progress. And we wanted to take, to celeb, as we celebrate the opening of the school, we went to say thank you to the educators, to the PTA members who helped dynamically in making this happen. So we organized a community walk. It was, we counted about sixty kids and it was a, a hot day. They braved it and about forty to fifty parents and we had a nice walk to say thank you, to salute the educators, to appreciate, to appreciate the achievement of our kids and looking forward for a better, vibrant community. So I just wanna share, it was wonderful.
Thank you.
In fact, member of the, the school, their parents with kids with her. So this is another way of creating a vibrant community and I'd like to recognize Impact Silver Spring and the Tacoma Park Community Action Group participated well. So it's a wonderful story, let's keep it going. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Darryl Perry, AKA Smokey D. I don't live in the community, I live in Burtonsville. I'm an active member in Tacoma Park Community Action Group. I've been attracted to this area as a kid. I swam at the pool. I'm forty-nine years old. I swam at that pool as a young kid. Ms. Bell was running the rec facility back then. That pool allowed me to realize that there weren't only black people in the world, there were white people, there were green people, there were purple people. That pool was like melting pot in my life. It played a very significant role to get along with people outside my race. I salute the kids. I commend you to stand up and fight for something you believe in. That is so powerful. I salute you. I literally salute you. And for, in your life, you must stand for something or fall for anything. And you guys are standing and that is so strong. are standing, and that is so strong, so powerful. I think the pool plays a role in a lot of our lives, whether we use it as often as whoever think we should, or whatever the case might be, but I don't think it's their decision how much the pool should be used. I think the pool should be used whenever, whenever one wants to use it. And to take that from the kids and the people in the community, that's the problem now. There's nothing for kids to do, and you want to know why kids are doing some of the things they do. I think the pool can play a role in the rehabilitation for people that might need it, the young man that's suffering from MS and what have you. I can't imagine taking something that affects a community, a group of people, the kids. I can't imagine that ever happening. I love Tacoma Park, and I don't live here, but I'm frequently in this community on a daily basis, because I like what it does to me. I like the aura that the people give off. Old Town, I'm very close to Terry and Joyce. I've gotten to know a lot of people in the community, and I've really got to know some of the young kids that are standing for what they believe in. And my second issue is, I say, I come through this community probably four to five times a week. I can't ever remember this road. I spoke on this about four months ago. It's at Flower. It's this hidden stop sign behind this big bush. It needs, those bushes need to be cut. The stop sign, there needs to be a light. Something has to happen before someone gets killed at that stop sign. I mean, you literally can't see it till you get up on it, and I know it's there, but I don't see it to remind me that it's there. And I said, I spoke on this about four months ago, and I just hope something happens before someone gets seriously injured or killed at that stop sign. And again, I want to thank you, young folks. Salute you. Keep it up.
Thank you.
Hi. Good evening. My name is Lenita Whitehurst, and I'm the parent of a fourth grader at Piney Branch. And we're here this evening to present council members with letters written by my son's classmates, and I have to tell you, these letters will break your heart, okay, asking to please keep the pool open at Piney Branch. I just wanted to share with you a little bit from one letter. The reason this city is so happy is because of the Piney Branch Pool, and if you don't help us, then you are personally taking away the city's happiness. So, we just want to present you with these letters, and we hope you'll take time to read them and share them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hi. I'm Chris Peterson, eighty-one oh-nine Grove Street. I've been on the board of Daleview Pool for the last ten years, and have been a former president for six. Things I'm hearing from the council members that we should really all hear is that this is not just their choice, or it's not on their backs. Is there representatives from YMCA here tonight?
I don't believe so.
So, we can throw them under the bus. I think it's really, it's going to be better that they're not running the pool. I don't think they really had a desire to see it succeed, but I, we'd all need to embrace the fact that we do need to reach out to the other council members that, I know that Parks and Recreation did run the pool. I'm not sure if we can get them back doing it again. But running a pool myself, and being part of a board that runs a pool, you all need to understand, running a pool is really expensive. And so, this is going to take a lot of effort on all our parts to make sure that we do pull as many resources. I'm seeing, you know, there's already volunteers here that I know are going to have good ideas. So, it's really important. This is a dollars and cents thing. We need to make sure that we can pull as much resources as possible, because it does take a lot, you know. Just about everyone in here probably had their kids learned, like my son, who just went off to college, in that pool. So, I don't want to see it filled up with concrete. Thanks.
Thank you.
Hi. I'm a Piney Branch student, and I'm graduating Piney Branch this year, and I really enjoy the pool as a swimmer myself. I currently swim on a team, and I might start a sec, I might go to a second team, and I know that some of my friends don't swim, and they want to join me and all my, some of my friends that also join me in the deep end of the pool and get to enjoy the slides. And that's another reason to keep the pool open, is because some kids in the Maple area and some all over Tacoma Park, they don't know how to swim, and they would definitely love to learn, because they think it's so much fun to be in the pool. Okay. Thanks.
Thank you. What's your name? What's your name?
Tess.
Tess. Thank you, Tess.
Hi. My name's Anna, and I am a Pinecrest student, and I used to go to Piney Branch, and I remember, I love seeing my friends happy, and I know that they don't always get to swim as much as I do in the summertime and even during the wintertime, and I think we should keep the pool open, because there are kids who don't know how to swim, and I know that they would have so much fun swimming and knowing how to swim.
Thank you.
My name is Katia Parkham, whole place Tacoma Park, and I'd just like to reiterate some of the points that some other people have made about the pool being a tremendous resource for bringing the community together. Unfortunately, it's been little known and has mostly brought the Piney Branch Elementary Community together, but perhaps in the future, it could be publicized better. But in any case, within the community at Piney Branch, they haven't collected literally hundreds of bathing suits for donation to needy students over the years. I can vouch for this being the only aquatic experience that many of our younger kids have, just the grades three to five at Piney Branch. It's also a tremendous incentive, rather than having parties with cakes and cookies and stuff, which doesn't really promote fitness. Pool parties are an extremely popular alternative, and also, a number of years ago, there was a huge incentive to the students to meet an academic challenge when the previous principal promised to jump into the pool suit and all. He did it, too.
Thank you.
Debbie Casey, Prince George's Avenue. Let me tell you something interesting. I've lived my entire life at Tacoma Park, and until Caleb started at Piney Branch two years ago, I had no idea there was a pool there. Until I came to this meeting tonight, I had no idea it was open to the public at all, ever. So, as far as I could tell, nobody ever promoted it. I'd give you money right now for a membership, except for there's no pool anymore. Now, I really get that you guys are not in charge of whether the pool gets saved or not. I also know that without your commitment, it won't happen. So, now my question is, how do we follow up and keep contact with what's going on, what the process is about, and what's happening? How will we keep up with that?
Well, I would be happy to report back on the outcome of any meetings that I have, but I would also very strongly encourage you to contact all the county council, members of the county council also, since it is a county school facility. I think they are really important in terms of this particular issue.
Okay. I have an aside about New Hampshire Avenue. Until you can convince people to stop going seventy miles an hour from the old Allen Theater down to the bottom of Ray Road, not much is going to happen there, because it's dangerous.
Yes. Well, that's certainly true, and one of the things we looked at. Thank you.
Hi. I'm Jeremy Genio. I'm a third grader at Piney Branch Elementary, and I came, I came to Piney Branch thinking that I would be able to swim in the pool, but when I heard that the pool was closed, I was really sad.
Thank you.
My name is Karen Lang. I live on Philadelphia Avenue. Jeremy is my son, and he really was excited about that pool all summer, really excited. So, it's kind of heartbreaking, and how do you explain it? But I think this is an opportunity. I've sat and watched the city build the community center and talk about building community in the center, in the city, and trying to get a gym, et cetera, et cetera. Now we have an opportunity. We have a pool. We don't have to build a pool. It's there. So, the question is, I mean, if we had gotten a gym, which we never did get, but we still would have had to operate it, would have been cheaper than a pool, but we have a pool, which to my mind is more exciting than a gym. I guess that's, you know, maybe my own personal point of view. It's a very exciting thing. This is an opportunity. I'm a member of the Y. I never could get them to tell me what the hours of the pool were. So, I didn't use the pool very much, and of course, people who weren't members of the Y couldn't use the pool during the last few years. This is a wonderful opportunity. I know the city can't do it alone, but if the city, every member of the council gets behind this and then joins together with us to go to the county, maybe we can save this pool and build community with the pool, with programs in the pool. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Becca Shokar, and I'm in fifth grade at Piney Branch, and the pool, ever since I started third grade at Piney Branch, has been a very important thing to me. I came back to school looking forward to the cause of the pool, and I was very disappointed when I found out we couldn't swim in it. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Grant Tipton. I used to go to Piney Branch, but I just moved into middle school, and my brother's in fourth grade, so he got to use the pool for one year, but now it's closed, so he's not, and he's bummed. But, and I also have a friend who's in third grade and has never swam in the pool, and I'm not positive about this, but I'm pretty sure that he was looking forward to swimming in it. But now that it's closed, he can't, and so I'm just saying, please save the pool.
Thank you.
Hi. I'm Josh Wright at seventy-four one Maple Avenue. First, I'd like to say thank you and commend all the young activists. It's very impressive to me. So, I'd say we all give him a round of applause. Second, I would like to thank the council, because I think all of you have said they are in support of keeping the pool open and trying to figure out a way to work with the other government entities to make that happen. I would like to point out a few things. One is that having a pool in your community is an amazing asset. It's a, it's a real physical resource. People have brought up that we built, you know, this wonderful community center, and we did that. That's great. We've put programming into it and made recreation better as a result. I think for me, a couple of things. One is I think it's a real opportunity to sort of turn an unpolished gem that we have in this community into a polished gem, and really to make people aware of the pool. I moved to Tacoma Park a little over two and a half years ago, and I had no idea that the pool was even open or existed. My wife is an avid swimmer for exercise. I've talked to young families who have young kids like myself, who have also recently moved to Tacoma Park, and I think of eight or nine of those people, one of them knew that the pool was open or available. So, I think the things we need to do are, A, get the county to reopen the pool, but also add programming and a great deal of publicity to make sure that the pool is known about, and then we can turn it into a real asset for the public. So, I hope that you guys will continue to support us in helping us getting the different levels of government and bureaucracy to work for the people. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. My name's Max. I just wanted to say, as a fifth grader, I really enjoy the pool, and I went to the pool in the fourth grade, and I really loved it. And this year, I'm really disappointed, because the pool was something like I really liked, and this summer, I really missed it, going to the pool, and I just wanted to say that. Thank you.
Thank you.
And as a mom of a fifth grader at Piney Branch Elementary School, I would be delighted to be able to bring him back to the pool after school and be able to spend more money in Tacoma Park, because I'm at this pool instead of at a different pool, and as others have said, didn't even know it was open, other than for the school. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. I'm Nicholas Spector Ross, and we didn't, we barely knew this existed. We barely knew the pool existed, and once we found out in some years, we went to Piney. One of the reasons, because they had a pool, and I'm on a swim team, and I like it, but since there's no pool, can't do it. We've always just went to the Y. There's no reason to go that far out. We have one right here.
Thank you.
So, I'd like to say-
Thank you.
Hi. My name is Eileen Sobek. I live at seven-six-three-seven Carroll Avenue. It's very daunting to speak after such articulate speakers that came before me, so I apologize if I'm a little bit of a letdown, because I'm actually not going to talk about the pool. I wanted to say something about the traffic studies that are going to be presented tonight. I'm the chair of the Long Branch Sligo Citizens Committee, or Neighborhood Association, or whatever LBSCA stands for, and I just want to let you know that the citizens in our neighborhood are very deeply interested in this and care about it a lot, and we have talked about it for a long time, and Mayor Porter came to our annual meeting last May, and we talked about what the study was and wasn't going to do, and the opportunities for participation. When there was an opportunity to meet and talk with the contractor before the study was done, I came and participated, and there were a number of people from the neighborhood who did, but obviously, not everybody who's interested was there, and there's already been quite a spirited dialogue in the community, and I just want people to know that, that there is not yet a consensus of opinion about what our goals should be about traffic in our neighborhood and what some of the, and therefore, there's certainly no consensus about what might be done. And while we're all eager to hear more about the traffic study, you know, I think you're going to hear, there's a lot of comments, there are going to be a lot of comments, and we should hear the presentation before we make them, I think, but I think that there needs to be a lot more opportunities for input and for dialogue with the community before we go forward with action, and I understand that that's going to happen. I will just note that when we had that initial meeting with the contractor, with city staff, we were told that the study would be available soon after it was submitted to the city at the end of June, and the reality was, it wasn't available to the website, on the website, until last Wednesday, and most people received their copies in the mail last Thursday with notice of the meeting tonight. So, while we did try to get the word out on the listserv, and we did talk about it at a Neighborhood Association Board meeting, on Friday, there are a lot of people who just got back into town, that haven't gone through all their mail, that haven't had a chance to digest it, and there's certainly, there's some strong reactions, and there's still a lot of need for people to kind of talk and have their concerns aired and answered. And so, I would just urge you to take that into account and try to set that up, not necessarily at a council meeting, but perhaps a meeting that's open to the community. There are a lot of people who said that they wanted to be here tonight but weren't able to because of other commitments, and knowing how many people cared about the pool and public comments, so I hope you know that there are a lot of people watching this on TV or wanting the Neighborhood Association to report back to them, and people are very concerned. If I can take twenty seconds to wear another hat, not as the Neighborhood Association Chair, but as somebody who's concerned about, one, the future use of the WAB property. I see on the agenda, you're looking at members for the Health Services Committee. Obviously, if that committee needs new members, and I know there's been some turnover, that makes a lot of sense. I'm hoping that that's not a decision by the council about the structure of the committee.
No. It is not. And we're going to have to talk about that structure. We came ninety-nine percent of the way toward making a decision, but we still have to make the final decision.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Hi. My name is Joan Samworth. I live at seventy-three eighteen Flower Avenue, Flower Avenue in Jackson. I'm here to talk about the traffic study. I received this in the mail and read it thoroughly, and I can't tell you how disappointed I am. There is nothing creative in here about solutions for the problem that we have on Flower. I think one of the reasons is that we're looking at traffic calming, and it's really about- about, we should focus on volume of traffic. I've been in that house for 12 years in February. I've seen a huge increase in traffic in the last five or six years. I can see out my living room window how many people stop at the stop sign, and I would say 50%. The rest, I'd say 30% are rolling stops. I never see any policeman there to enforce the stoppage at that sign. If I had children growing up in the neighborhood, I would have moved out a few years ago, because I would worry for their safety. As noted in this, on page, let's see, it talks about the width of the different streets, and Flower Avenue is one of the most narrow, Flower Avenue on page two, is 18 feet to 24 feet wide, and it has the most volume of all the other streets. And I would like to see something proposed. They're talking about speed humps and stop signs. That's what we have, it's not working. I would like to see something totally different proposed. For instance, maybe closing off Flower. And I know the other part of the neighborhood doesn't want to hear that, because our street bears all the traffic, and that would mean other streets would have to bear some of the traffic. But I do believe there's other solutions. I'm not a traffic specialist, but I think one-way signs could work. Do not enter at certain times of the day. But not only are weekdays busy, weekends are really horrendous. It's not about people going to work. It's cut through. It's cut through from New Hampshire to Carroll to Piney Branch University. And we see the police, but we see them mostly when they're going on call down to New Hampshire. So I'm one resident that wanted to stay in town so that I could have my say in front of all of you, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Carol Hotten, 101 Sheridan Avenue, and I just wanted to briefly express my support for keeping the Piney Branch pool open. I don't have children in the elementary school. My experience with it is taking deep water and shallow water aerobics courses. The Washington and Venice Hospital sponsors swim courses there, and the Y actually allows anybody to come in, to drop in and use the pool, pay $5, and you could do lap swimming or whatever during certain hours. So it's actually available to the entire community. You don't even need a Y membership, actually. And it has the potential for being a tremendous resource for the city. I think it's been rather poorly managed by the Y, and it certainly has not been widely advertised. Many people have expressed the fact that they didn't even know that the resource was there. But I think with a little bit more advertising and some renovation of the facilities, it could just be a tremendous resource. And I do understand the expense of managing a pool, and I know that the city budget is limited, but I would really like to see the city involved in at least working with the county in keeping the pool open and having some sort of input, whether it's moral support or perhaps even financial. I at least would be willing to pay some sort of a bond in order to keep the pool going, and that I know that's a complicated matter, and I don't want to get into that now. But anyway, I just wanted to point out that it's not just people who are associated with the, who have children in the Piney Branch Elementary School, but the community, Y do use that resource. And I do intend to contact the county council members, because I know they're deeply involved in this as well. But I really appreciate your willingness to accept input from the community and to take action on it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Elizabeth Cozel. I'm here with my daughter, who represents a third generation of Tacoma Park residents on Wildwood Drive, Ward 6. We have literally been there since Wildwood Drive was dirt. My father was on the city council. I have been a past president of the New Hampshire Garden Citizens Association. Leon Brunson, also a past president, is here this evening. And in consideration of time constraints, I want to say a big fat ditto to Eileen from Long Branch, to the lady from 7500 Central, to the other two ladies who spoke before me. Apparently, there are three types of these documents, the one, the report from Wallace and Associates for my neighborhood and for each of their neighborhoods. Earlier this evening, we heard Councilman Williams speak about a plan, or a new master plan, as he put it, along New Hampshire Avenue from Ethan Allen to Sligo. We also heard a woman make public comment about the speeding from the old Allen Theater, which is now across from Shopper's Food Warehouse and Wendy's, I think it's a discount store, down to Ray Road. Clearly, there needs to be something cohesive done in the city regarding traffic. Calming devices is an oxymoron, similar to organized chaos. There is no calming device. A stop sign, at best, is the honor system. This is the report that I received in my mailbox Thursday, and it's almost plagiarism from what came out of the Prince George's County Engineers' Office in 1994. It's the same mandates. Upgrade your stop signs, post the speed limit, try a few speed humps. It doesn't work, it doesn't work, it doesn't work. The real issue is whether our interior-to-the-city residential streets are to become the seventh and eighth lanes unofficially of Maryland Route 650, Maryland Route 193, and others, or whether they're to be calm and serene residential streets. I think the real issue is not to try and calm traffic. In the 21st century, with road rage, there's no such thing as calming traffic. I can personally go over a speed bump without damaging my shock absorbers at 20 miles an hour. The suggested speed is five. A stop sign posted four-way says, hey, three other dudes have to stop. I'm going to blow through it. Sadly, and contemporaneously, with the surveyors in my neighborhood taking data and cut through traffic and volume of traffic, there were traffic circles being installed that were condemned in the report. I don't think one hand knows what the other is doing, and I would seriously urge this council, or the next, which will be seated in about 60 days, to really, seriously consider the long-term impact from 13 years and well into the future. Thank you.
Thank you.
I've also decided to take a little bit of time myself. She failed to mention the chicanes suggestion, which is just insanity. I did calculations, and it would take out at least one driveway per chicane, as well as a sidewalk, and two parking spaces, and we took a poll of about half of our neighbors, because most of them, given the Labor Day weekend, were out or doing something themselves, and the majority of the neighborhood is Seventh-day Adventist, so they were practicing their religion and not able to be reached. But about half of the people we polled said, maybe try a speed hump. It's not going to work, but try it. They think the chicanes is insanity. My mother and I spent yesterday tracing it out in chalk on our road. It's insanely large, and all of our neighbors think that it would be an incredible obstruction. It might work, although after a while, people would become used to it. You know, when you are in your home at night, and you go to the bathroom, you're not going to bump into things, because you've grown accustomed to your home. Anybody that actually wants to go on Wildwood Drive will go on Wildwood Drive. They will eventually learn how to snake around, and then they will still be going at their insane speeds, but they will be wiggling around as preferred. They probably think it's fun. I mean, I know that many people my age would find that fun. I don't understand them, but I don't understand so much of them. Oh, I've been handed things. Oh, and the definition of a chicane is an obstacle on a racecourse. So if we want to purport the Wildwood Drive as a racecourse, I guess we should go ahead with the chicanes, but if we want to actually eliminate traffic, we definitely need to close it off. I was a baby, or possibly not even born, when my mother suggested closing it off or making it one-way streets, and it hasn't been done. And when we were brought into Montgomery County, we suggested it again. It still wasn't done. But maybe try again. I'm eloquent enough now that I'm rallying behind my mother. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
I'm Emily Kerslin from 7217 Garland Avenue. I live in the Long Branch-Sligo neighborhood, like Eileen and Joan. I'm also here to talk about the traffic study, not to address specific points in it, but to make some more general points. One is, I am disappointed that it was distributed so few days before this meeting, and again, right before a holiday weekend. And I just want to, from certain things I've read, and perhaps I haven't been tuned in during this entire conversation, but I saw a reference to a hearing, and I hope that's true. I just, in my neighborhood, there are a lot of very strong opinions about whether we have a traffic problem, whether we don't have a traffic problem, and if we do, what the solution should be. And so I just hope that the council, or maybe smaller groups, allow residents a lot of time and opportunities to comment on this. Because in our neighborhood, other than on the listserv, we have not had, and everybody, of course, isn't on the listserv, have not had one big conversation about it. And I think we need to try to come to some kind of consensus, consensai throughout the city before anybody goes ahead with any of the proposed solutions. Thank you.
Hi, I am Brahnu Badani. I lived in Tacoma Park for the last two years, and then I came here in the United States five years before, and then I bring all my families two years before. And three of my childrens are like to live in Tacoma Park. This is the historic place for me. After I separated with my families, and then we come together again in Tacoma Park, and then all of my childrens love to live in Tacoma Park. My youngest son, Caleb, is in third grade in Piney Branch Elementary School, and then we, all families, always coming out from our apartment, we see Piney Branch Elementary School in front of our apartment, and we are very happy for that. And then at the back, we always think our pool, and three of my childrens always spend their time, two, three days in a week. Please keep it open. We are behind you. And then last week, after the PTA meeting, I, we all families are coming together, and we try to do something for the pool, and what we suggest that, once in a week, if we contact with the pool management, we are volunteers to spend our three, two or three hours in a day to clean up all around the pool, and then we are very happy to keep it as it is. Please help us. Thank you very much.
Well, thank you.
Hi, my name is Rachel Timidolsky. I live at 7400 Flower Avenue, and again, wanted to talk about the traffic study. I just wanted to mention a few things. Flower Avenue is not safe for families. We live at the corner of Flower and Jackson, and we have young children, and we do not let our children out in our front yard. And when we are with the kids in the front yard, and the kids are getting in the car, we have to watch them with such close supervision, which of course, we do as parents, but it's just not a neighborhood feeling. For the narrow street we moved into, we have way too much traffic, and I really sincerely believe it's just a matter of time before we have an accident involving someone of any age. The traffic is such a high volume, and as other speakers have said, you'll do not stop at the corner we live on. It's just a matter of time before someone is hit by a car. There have been several accidents in front of our house, all of them involving cars and not pedestrians, but again, I just really think it's a ticking time bomb. I guess I would like to say that I hope that as we go through the conversations about what we should do about particularly Flower Avenue, but the whole Long Branch-Sligo Creek neighborhood, that we involve people in kind of figuring out what's really going on. The report does not fully address our problems. For example, on page four, it talks about how a license plate style or origin destination study was performed during the morning and evening on Thursday, May 24th. They performed the study on one day. When we found out that the study was going to be conducted, I put through the channels that I really thought they needed to study also on Saturday. The volume is incredibly high on Saturday, and that was not addressed by this report. So I don't think that this was money well spent, because a lot of the things the report said, you could ask anyone who lives on Flower, and they could tell you. The science isn't super. And really, I don't know that we need to go and pay someone else to do it. I would be happy to be a volunteer to sit on my porch and monitor who's going by, and count the volume, and tell you who's stopping at a stop sign. It'd be great if we had more police enforcement. I know several neighbors call when we see patterns of traffic that go by that are not neighbor-friendly. There's a huge noise problem on Flower Avenue with loud blaring stereos. It's just sort of not family-friendly, or just not household-friendly. It's not good for kids, it's not good for the elderly, it's not good for anyone in between. So anyway, I would just encourage the council in evaluating and talking to residents to really make sure we have the facts right, make sure that we're not just looking at peak times, make sure that we're looking at the weekends, too. I didn't look up, May 24th is a Thursday, apparently, probably close to Memorial Day holiday. I haven't checked it out, but anyway. My two cents.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who would like to speak?
Mayor Porter.
Yes.
I, first of all, I appreciate, as I said earlier, all the young activists, the other children and parents coming tonight. I also wanted to recognize the work that Councilmember Clay did in helping this council see all you people tonight. And I just suggest, Mayor Porter and the rest of the council, that we talk this coming week about maybe drafting a resolution encouraging the county council to get this resolved and reinforcing the importance of this pool to our community and to this council.
I mean, we could do that. My sense is that the county council is probably going to be more influenced by the number of contacts they get from residents who are actually using the pool. I think that both George Leventhal and Valerie Irvin are working on this, and I think it's a question of pulling something together, and I think they have heard people. So I'm not sure what a resolution would add to that overall.
I think it would give Heather and the young activists something for their efforts tonight.
And I would like to add to that. I would like to add to that, that I don't think that the city has actually expressed an interest and a willingness to be a more active partner in the pool. And I've told that story definitely when I've been talking to the people at the Piney Branch Elementary School PTA meetings, but I think actually, it is really imperative that we make that statement on record, because I don't think that's the position that we've had or demonstrated over the last several years.
Well, if we're going to get into that, it's probably going to lead to a much larger discussion. And my suggestion is that we move to try and deal with this as quickly as we can. And I also suggest that we not take up more time, since we're running about an hour and something behind our schedule, and we have a number of people who've been waiting for quite a long time for us to get to their issues, that we not take up more time sort of debating it this evening. Next, we have a couple of interviews, three, four interviews coming up, and then we also have the presentation on the traffic study. I would like to go ahead and get the interviews and the presentation over with before the council takes a break, and then, because we have several other items on our work session agenda. We have an interview with Arthur Wohl for the Fakolta, W-O-H-L, I believe, Arthur Wohl. Is he here this evening? Oh, you want to come up and sit at the table up here, or at the podium, whichever you're more comfortable? Come ahead, sit at the table. I think it'd be hard to, easier for us to talk to you. Welcome. You've applied for a position on the Commission on Landlord-Tenant Affairs, and you have given us some information on your background, and I see that... given us some information on your background, and I see that you have been very active in the city. What I'd like to start with is to just ask you about your interest on COLTA, and what you think you could bring to it.
Well, I've been to Tacoma Park since '05. I came in here pretty much by a happenstance. There was an admin paper for an apartment, happened to be in Tacoma Park, and I took it. And that was a one-year lease, and I really found that I enjoyed this city very much, and got attached to it very quickly. At the end of that lease, I took a two-year lease where I am now, with my wife. And we're starting a family, and we really like it here in Tacoma Park. We plan to buy a house here when our two-year lease is over. And I've, my family has a history of being locally active. We grew up in New York, in a similar town, and so I kind of have that inside me, and I've never really been inspired to act on it in different places where I've lived, such as Alexandria, and places in Massachusetts. But having moved to Tacoma Park, and becoming, having become so attached to it, I think what, I want to become involved in this community in the best way I can. And the most things that I've learned about Tacoma Park so far have been in landlord-tenant affairs. I had some issues with my first landlord, where I just immediately decided to research them and see what the Tacoma Park Code was all about, and became knowledgeable about that. I've since, since signing my two-year lease, I've become the president of my tenants association, and have further familiarized myself with the Tacoma Park Code, as well as the Maryland, rather, the Montgomery County Code, Montgomery County Code Enforcement. And I think that, I just think that on the, on the COLTA Commission is, or rather, on the COLTA councils, where I would not be wasting anybody's time. I think I have some experience that would be applicable, and I think I would enjoy doing it very much.
I noticed that in addition to being president of the 710 Hudson Avenue Tenants Association, you also have a background in the judicial system.
Yeah, currently, I'm a judicial administrator at the D.C. Superior Court.
So you're familiar with the kind of rules that COLTA operates under?
And processes, yes.
Well, that sounds like that would be a good fit.
Yeah.
Are there any other questions that other members of the council have?
I have no questions. I just thank you for volunteering for this, and look forward to your being involved, not just with COLTA, but even with some of the maybe activism for tenants in your neighborhood.
Yeah, well, I definitely look forward to the opportunity, and I'm glad to be able to take advantage of it.
Do other members of the council have any questions? Well, thank you. We very much appreciate your volunteering, and I think you've got a good background for the position. We appreciate it. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
I believe our gentleman for the Merchants Preparedness Committee is not going to be here this evening because he's ill. We have an individual who has volunteered for the Health Services Impact Committee, Neda Scarpari. Welcome.
It's actually pronounced Neda Scarpari.
Neda Scarpari.
Yeah.
Well, I apologize for the mispronunciation, and thank you for correcting me. I'd like to also ask you, we've got the information that you sent us, about your interest in the Health Services Impact Committee, and what you'd like to bring to the committee.
Certainly. I worked on Capitol Hill for four years on health policy, and from that, I mean, I found it very interesting, which on the Hill is considered strange, because most people don't like working on healthcare, or healthcare financing, or more healthcare policy for that matter. But it is something that I find very interesting, and I think it's very important to the community to ensure that health services are accessible, available, and affordable. So I think that I bring with me the knowledge that I gained on Capitol Hill in dealing with health policy, and the accessibility issues, and kind of bringing them to more micro level, and actually implementing the, having that accessibility of health services, having that availability of health services. And, you know, importantly, I think for Tacoma Park, the affordability. And so through this committee, taking a look at what is available here, what do we want to be available here, and how the, you know, movement of Washington Adventist Hospital is going to affect those three aspects of healthcare. I'm also a graduate student at Johns Hopkins University. I'm studying health finance and management, and we're doing a lot of work on leadership, and prioritizing, learning how to set out projects, and achieve those goals, have measurable goals. I'd like to be able to apply that to a community scenario through this committee.
Well, in addition to your graduate work, you also, you've got a list here of your positions that you've had in healthcare policy, and it seems to me that that would be a good background for this committee. Anyone else on the council have questions? Well, thank you very much for volunteering. I think, as I said, we're very lucky to have people with such good backgrounds. Thank you. We have two individuals who have volunteered for the Public Safety Citizens Advisory Committee, Enos Bevel and Geneva Simmons. If you'd like to come up here, and have a seat at the table. Is Ms. Simmons here? I'm gonna, we're gonna, have you come up at the same time, because you're both applying for the Public Safety Citizens Advisor Committee, and I would note that we do have, I believe, more than enough openings. We actually have three openings on the committee, and so we certainly could take both of you. I'm going to do ladies first, and ask Ms. Simmons about your interest in the Public Safety Citizens Advisory Committee.
Okay. Well, I moved to Tacoma Park in December. I've always been interested in public safety, and I don't think that it's something that should rest solely in the hands of the public safety officials. I think community involvement is very important. And I went online, and I did some research about what the committee has done in the past, in terms of looking into the recruitment and retention of police officers, trying to get neighborhood safety contacts, trying to get the community excited about doing things like that, about being certified in emergency response training, and those are things that interest me. I've already become involved in my condo association board as vice president. I'm also going to be taking on duties of treasurer there as well. So I'm starting to get involved with my condo association, but I also want to get involved in the community, so I thought this would be a good fit for me.
Well, it certainly sounds like you've done all the right things, and just looking at the materials that you've given us, I think that's very helpful, that you're interested in public safety. Thank you. Are there additional questions for Ms. Simmons? I believe you live in Ward 5, yes? In 2?
It's 2.
In Ward 2, okay. We've got only one other person from Ward 2 on the Public Safety Committee, so that would be helpful to have that representation also. Good. Okay, Mr. Bevel, do you also want to talk a little bit? You have given us quite a lot of interesting information on your background. I wonder if you could talk a little bit about your interest in the Public Safety Citizens Advisory Committee?
Definitely. It's a pleasure to see you all again. As you all know, I'm also part of the COLTA Commission. I've, one of my interests in school is the holistic approach to communities and how they develop, how they change with the times, adjust, and I'm studying government school. And I think that my interest in the public sphere is based on just this kind of holistic approach. Particularly, I just recently, my family just recently moved to Ward 5, and there's been some incidents where some individuals have gone around into some vacant lots, where my nephew, who's about seven years old, they go out and play, but some individuals go into a lot, and they have pretty much vandalized the lot with alcohol bottles. And there was a, in the newspaper, Tacoma Park newspaper, we're discussing with my family, it says that, you know, whatever you need, whenever you see something out of ordinary, you need to contact the police. And I know that, in particular, that a lot of people really don't take an interest in their civic responsibilities. That's something that has been instilled in me and my family, to really be involved in my community, to support my community, and do whatever I need to do to ensure the safety of my community and my family, because I have my nephew, and as a young man as well, I think that I provide a, definitely a unique aspect and perspective to the community, so.
Well, that's very helpful, and, you know, you certainly have a lot of evidence of your interest in public participation, so that's helpful, too. And representing Ward 5, I think both Ward 5 and Ward 2 could use some additional representation on the committee. Not to sort of say anything negative about anyone else's ward, but Ward 1 and 3 are very heavily represented on the committee, and we could use a little bit more representation from the other wards, so that is also extremely helpful. Any other questions for Mr. Bevel?
Oh, I'd like to thank you very much for offering to serve. As the mayor has pointed out, it is, it has been difficult to get folks in Ward 5 to step up to the plate and do some citizen work, and so I'm really glad to see both your work on COLTA and working on this as well. That's really great.
Well, thank you both for volunteering, and we very much appreciate it, and I think you both have evidenced a lot of interest in, you know, working on this, and we would be, you know, happy to, should I say, reward or punish your interest by appointing you to a city committee, so thank you all very much.
Thank you.
All right. I appreciate everybody who volunteers for our committees, that's how we keep many of these issues going in the city. But we're now moving along to the presentation of the various neighborhood traffic calming studies. Are you gonna, Alana, are you gonna sort of introduce this part of it? I wonder if when you do the introduction, you could talk a little bit about the process, because we've had several people comment on their interest in having more opportunities for discussion.
Okay, thank you.
It's a microphone.
Okay. Thank you, mayor, councilmembers, city manager. Essentially, this is the presentation of the traffic calming study that was conducted in the spring. It's a recommendation, or it contains traffic calming recommendations, and what staff is advising, that the council do is schedule a public hearing, in order to have a more thorough discussion of what, both the contents and the neighborhood's reaction, or how the neighborhoods would like to proceed in terms of moving forward with the recommendations. Now, I know in the meeting prior to the traffic, the development of the traffic study, there were some questions where the study could go one way or the other way, such as street closure versus traffic calming, and, or street closure versus, like slowing down speeds versus slowing down, changing the volume on streets. And so, if those need to be revisited, that might require more extensive meetings, so. But at the moment, what staff is recommending is to go forward with a public hearing, to receive comments from the community, and then to schedule additional sessions as necessary in order to implement recommendations.
Well, I think there may be other alternatives that, there was alternatives suggested, such as offering opportunities for members of the community to actually have a meeting, you know, a public meeting, and maybe we should talk about some of those other options also. But I'd like to see what the presentation is, and give people sort of an opportunity to ask any questions they have. And we're gonna, and you're gonna do this as a overhead thing, so we need to come down and sit down.
Yes, yes, so you'll need to.
Do you have any introduction you'd like to share to this?
Sure. I should have looked at your bio beforehand, but this is Matt Wallace, he's from WM, I'm sorry, Matt Allen from Wallace Montgomery and Associates. They were the engineering firm. We actually were lucky enough to have four responding firms, and this was the most responsible bidder, and so, and they were very good about completing the project in a very timely fashion, and we're very thorough, and actually, we're very good about giving the city options in terms of how the study was conducted. So, we're pleased, and now we have the report, which will need to be looked at.
Okay, thank you. Before we begin the PowerPoint, did you have something you wanted to say?
No, let's get going.
Okay, so the council needs to move down here, so because we have fairly primitive audiovisual facilities here, we have to move down to the front row so we can see it also.
We do have handouts of the presentation. I'm afraid we didn't bring enough, so if you can share, we'll make sure that copies of the presentation are put on the website as well this week. Okay, we'll move this, through this pretty quickly. It's hoped to be a 20-minute presentation, followed up with some time for some questions. Again, my name is Matt Allen, I work for a consulting firm at Wallace Montgomery. I'd like to recognize my coworker here, John Rattanis, who helped me with this presentation, was very instrumental in completing this work in time and under budget. And simply, my task today, as Alana said, is to present the findings of this, of these studies to you. Some, I can personally talk about this stuff for a very long time, but we're limited to 20 minutes, so we're going to cruise on, right on through. My purpose today is to talk about the neighborhood coordination meetings that we had. We had a coordination meeting prior to the study starting, to get some ideas from each of the three neighborhoods that we studied, okay? So I want to talk about that. I'd like to talk about how we got the data collection for this traffic calming study, and then of course, talk real quick, or talk about the results as well, okay? We held a neighborhood coordination meeting on May 16th, 2007, and the goals of this meeting was essentially to fully understand each neighborhood's concerns, okay? We wanted to hear from each of the neighborhoods what their concerns were, because we understood that maybe Neighborhood 1 was different than Neighborhood 2, was different than Neighborhood 3. And that would allow us to do goal number two, which is ensure that the project itself, the work tasks, were tailored to that neighborhood, okay? But first, what I did was, I went through a little recap of what is traffic calming, okay? And wanted to understand, explain that traffic calming devices come in two forms. There are those traffic calming devices that are speed-controlling, and there's other traffic calming devices that really are cut-through-controlling, okay? Those devices that control speed, and those devices that really limit cut-through traffic. So, the devices that control speed, everybody's aware of them. They're your humps, okay? Your bumps, your tables, okay? Your crosswalks, you have different types of textures, you can have brick, sometimes a combination of tables and crosswalks. So, these are common devices, these are chokers, you can see these little islands on either side are chokers, to narrow, visually narrow down the width of the roadway. These are very effective speed-controlling devices, and it is true, you put enough on these on a roadway, it will deter traffic from entering into the neighborhood, okay? The next group of devices are your chicanes, chokers, and bump outs. Whoops, let's back that one up a little. This is a black and white picture of what a chican is. It is essentially, can be designed as a single-lane chican, or a double-lane chican, essentially the idea... These, this last group are the cut-through limiting devices, okay? These are the devices that really truly limit and control your cut-through. These are your islands and your access limitations. So allow me to point out, with a pointer here, see this island here in the middle? It physically limits somebody from making a through movement, okay? So if you come northbound or you come up the page, you're physically required to make a right turn, okay? These islands come in all different forms, okay? There's this type of island that doesn't allow you to go through, okay? These islands physically limit people from making certain turns. These are drastic, and they're very limiting. And here's a couple pictures, the next couple pictures are pretty bad quality, but they give you the idea. Here's an island physically limits the access into a street. Okay, so then what we did is I had a break, because after that presentation, I was tired, but we broke out into work sessions, okay? I put people to work. We split up into three neighborhoods, the three neighborhoods that we studied, and I said, "Okay," and we put a map on the table, and I said, "I want three things from you. I want to know which routes suffer from cut-through traffic in your neighborhood. Number two, I wanted to know, do you truly want to stop cut-through traffic with those very limiting types of median islands? Or do you just simply want to control the speeding, okay? What do you truly want to do?" And finally, we needed to have a definition of speeding, and I wanted to know, do you agree that speeding is greater than 25 mile an hour, okay? So that is, the speed limit is 25 miles an hour, if you're speeding, you're going above the posted speed limit. The results after about, boy, we've seen about 20 minutes of talking through this, we essentially came back that all three neighborhoods agreed that speeding in their neighborhood is 25 miles an hour greater, okay? And in the Long Branch Sligo neighborhood, the major concern was speeding. They're worried about cut-through as well, but their major concern was speeding, their thoughts were, if we control the speeding, then that will control the cut-through as well. In the New Hampshire Avenue, they were more concerned about cut-through traffic, and in Pinecrest also was more concerned about speeding. Again, these were the representatives that attended the meeting in May. So, sorry, yes. Am I talking into it? Okay, all right, okay. So, thank you, Alana. So, the next step after we did the public meeting is we get to work and we did the data collection effort, all right? The data collection effort was, yes, an origin destination study, okay? It essentially keeps track of the license plates coming into and out of the neighborhood, how many left turns, how many through movements, and how many right turns, okay? That allowed us to focus on, well, if the right turn movements were a high movement, we could figure out where people are going to and why they're going in that direction, okay? And we also defined that 25% of cut-through volumes would consider significant, okay? So in other words, if we identified that a neighborhood was experiencing at least 25% cut-through, that's something we needed to look at closely. That was a significant number we needed to look at closely. The second item of business was a travel time study. The travel time study is essentially a way for us to figure out, why are people cutting through the neighborhood, okay? How much time do they save driving through the neighborhood versus driving around the neighborhood, okay? That allowed us also find out, to identify those cut-through routes that needed closer attention. And we also did a speed study. We did that with a radar gun, you may have seen us out in your neighborhoods with radar guns and stopwatches, and we identified what we call the 50th percentile speed and the 85th percentile speed, okay? The 50th, well, let me just explain, the 85th percentile speed is that speed where 85% of the traffic drives at or below, okay? And conversely, 15% of the traffic drive at or above. The 85th percentile speed for us traffic engineers is typically the speed that roads are posted at speed limit-wise, okay? It's generally accepted that that's the reasonable speed that people drive, okay? Again, the three neighborhoods, Long Branch, Sligo, was what we called neighborhood number one, and the blue dots identify those intersections where we did the origin destination studies. The speed studies, we did on every single road of the neighborhoods, okay? So we actually found a data location, at least one, on each of the neighborhood roadways. The New Hampshire Gardens, we selected those four intersections as being key intersections, and then similarly, the Pinecrest, we really focused on Fourth Avenue and Sligamille Road in that neighborhood, and these, again, were intersections that were identified during the public meeting on May 16th as being critical intersections that needed to be looked at. Okay, here are the results. Results for neighborhood number one, to the Long Branch-Sliggo intersection, okay? We identified what many people have said already, that yes, Flower Avenue is a cut-through route, okay? And it's very much a cut-through during morning and evening, the peak period during the week. It was mentioned, we recognized, we recognized that the northern part of Flower Avenue has a limited roadway width of 18 feet, and the southern part of South of Jackson is, has a 24-foot roadway width. Central Avenue is also a cut-through route as well as Garland Avenue, but we noticed that those cut-through routes were really mainly used in the afternoon, okay? Not, you know, certainly being used cut-through during the morning, but they're more heavily so prevalent in the afternoon. And what's being, what's happening is, interestingly enough, it's the right turn that's heavily used in the afternoon. So people come from the southeast, cut-through to make a right turn on Carroll Avenue. All right, now this is a confusing slide on the right, I'll try to explain it. The graphics are a little better in the report, if you have a color version of the report. This is the results of the travel time study, okay? Now, allow me to make, take an example here. The first row, points D to F, okay? Point D is in the south-right corner of the Sligo Mill area, and F is, we'll call it the hospital area, okay? So if you're using the cut-through route, you're coming up here, making a left, going through one of the neighborhood streets, probably Flower, to get to the airport and the college area. Or if you were not, you, sorry.
How the airport and hospital?
Oh, I'm sorry, did I say airport? Hospital, I apologize. There is no plan for an airport here. I am sorry, I don't know where that came from. All right, if you were to not cut-through, you would take this purple route west and head north on Carroll to get to the hospital and the college, okay? If you follow this line along, the cut-through route took six minutes and 50 seconds, or 49 seconds. The non-cut-through route is seven minutes and 20 seconds, so it means you actually saved 30 seconds by cutting through the neighborhood, okay?
Is that the rush hour?
It's during evening, rush hour, and midday. We did this actually a couple different times a day, so this is not just one reading, this is multiple readings throughout the day and we took an average, okay? So what it shows you, you can kind of go route by route and spend some time, look at your copy of the report, you can see, well, this is why people cut-through, it's because it's perceived to be faster, a faster route, okay? Another perception that may be, it doesn't always take longer, but if the route doesn't have a lot of signals, for instance, people think signals take a lot of time, even if you, you know, come up to it with a green light, people still think of that in their mind as a delay, and when they typically cut-through a neighborhood is because there are no signals in the neighborhood. Okay, the last slide is the results of the speed study, and interestingly enough, Long Branch-Sliggo wrote, there were no speeds, or the 85th percentile speeds were all, help me out here, John, less than 25 miles an hour, is that right? That sign is wrong. They're all less than 25 miles an hour. Allow me to explain this graphic here, okay? Here are all the roads that we did, collected speed data on. This first column is the 50th percentile speed, and this next column is the 85th percentile speed. Again, count the 85th percentile speed as relating to this posted speed limit, okay? This is the northbound, southbound, or the northbound direction, and this is the southbound, westbound direction. So we split it up by direction. You can see, all these numbers are below 25 miles an hour, and there was one right at 25 miles an hour. So based on our speed study, the 85th percentile speed was at or below the posted speed, okay? Based on our definition that we had during the public meeting was, technically, people are not speeding on this road, okay? Now, I don't want to be misconstrued, that's the 85th percentile speed. That doesn't mean nobody speeds. There are some people who go above the 25 mile per hour posted speed limit, but the vast majority are at or below. Okay, so based on all this information, what are we recommending? Well, we're recommending, in this neighborhood, a couple of areas, well, in general, the existing speed humps need to be improved, okay? They're not quite to current standards, they're old, they're degrading, but more importantly, the dimensions don't, are not current standards, okay? We also identify a couple of new ones, and I want to identify, you know, we really are focusing here on Hilton Avenue and also on Central Avenue, because as it turns out, one can turn onto Central Avenue, make a right turn on Jackson, left turn on Hilton, and not hit any speed bumps, okay? Interestingly enough, all right? So one of our concerns was, is well, if we do something here on Flower that moves traffic to the other quarters, and Hilton already is used as a major cut-through road. Somebody mentioned before this, the regulatory signs, they're, especially in this neighborhood, the regulatory signs need to be upgraded, the speed limit signs and the stop signs, okay? Now, adding stop signs will not control traffic, but it will at least tell people what the rules and the regulations are, okay? Too many of the signs in this neighborhood were obstructed by foliage, by trees, and were just dirty and old. One of the other areas that we're really focusing on also is the southern area here, where Flower intersects where the trail is. It was identified, when we did data collection, it was a pretty heavily pedestrian-traveled area, and yes, we noticed a lot of people blowing through the stop signs, okay? So we wanted to find a way, well, how do we get, we wanted to combine something else, a traffic calming device, with that existing three-way stop, and we decided that a raised crosswalk would really benefit things. It facilitates the path that is there, also identifies two motors, that this is a heavily pedestrian-traveled area. On to the next one, the New Hampshire Gardens, what we call neighborhood number two, going through the same iteration, okay? Sorry, let's see. Of all the data collection, and this was actually a little surprising to me, Wildwood Drive was actually identified as very much a cut-through route during morning and evening peak, okay? Drawing a blank on the name, but I was actually thinking, when I, sorry, Glenside, you know, I spent some time at the beginning of this study, just familiarizing myself with the neighborhoods, and, you know, we got a brand-new roundabout down here at the bottom, I really thought Glenside was going to be a cut-through, and I was really surprised when my data collectors came back and we crunched the data and found out that Wildwood is a cut-through. And we actually have a blow-up here, it kind of shows what the traffic lines look like.
Wildwood's flat, but it's like old.
Yeah, so it's, you're absolutely right, you're absolutely right. So it's, I was surprised at that, but yes, we've identified Wildwood Drive as being more of a cut-through route than any other, of the other neighborhood roads. And the travel time study supports this, okay? You save a lot of money, and allow me to just say, for instance, get one route from C, point C to point A, okay? From point C to point A, it takes three minutes, just over three minutes, you use the cut-through route, three minutes and 44 seconds to do the non-cut-through route, so you save close to 40 seconds cutting through the neighborhood, okay? Allow me to back up one slide here, I wanted to point something, wrong button. I wanted to, it's, yeah, this, you can see, well, you may be able to see orders of magnitude. You actually can see up here that the right turns have more digits, there are much more right-turn traffic, okay? So what's happening is people are really using this to cut-through to get to the north, okay? And they like to do that to avoid the intersections, the two busy intersections there at the north, okay? The intersection of point B and the intersection of point A. Instead of coming north, waiting here, making a left turn, and waiting again, it's much easier for them to cut-through the neighborhood.
And, and Street.
Yes, 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 you're absolutely right. And Street, what we, you know, and Street was identified right here, you're right, sir. We were more looking at the north-south routes that connect the two roads in the east and west there, okay?
What this neighborhood seemed to have in common, is heading out to District Columbia north on New Hampshire Avenue, any port is sworn to get to West Valley University.
I think that's fair, that's fair, okay? The speed study identified a couple roads where actually the 85th percentile is above the speed, opposed to speed limit, okay? So here's our first neighborhood that actually has speeding problems, okay? In our definition of speeding, where the 85th percentile is greater than 25 miles an hour, Glenside Drive, Wildwood Drive, Kennewick Avenue, and Kirkland Avenue, both were exhibiting 85th percentile speeds greater than 25 miles an hour, okay? And here again is this rather confusing table, but if you look at the orange numbers, you see quite a number above 25, you know, alarmingly, there's a 34 mile an hour. Again, this is the 85th percentile speed, 85% of the traffic drive at or below that speed right there, 34 miles an hour. So that was alarming to us in both directions, mind you. We got 34 in one direction, the other direction 31 miles an hour, okay? Recommendations here, we had a number of recommendations, and you'll find in the report that we tried to make recommendations that could build on one another, okay? Yes, it's true, we did maybe, number one, we recommended more speed humps. Why did we do that? Because speed humps are easy to install, okay? They're cost-effective, and my attitude is, well, let's try something that's cheap and see if that works. If that doesn't work, we tried to identify in a report, so if it doesn't work, let's try this, okay? I'm not one for advocating, spend a lot of money, let's do this stepwise fashion, okay? So yes, we did identify some new speed hump locations, and interestingly enough, you'll see, it's tough to see, but all these little blobs here are additional signs, we noticed that a lot of the roadways into this neighborhood did not have a speed limit sign, okay? Technically, when you turn onto a new road, you should, the first, one of the first signs you should be seeing is a 25 mile an hour speed limit, okay? These roads don't have them. So how do people know what the speed limit is when they turn onto this neighborhood street, okay? So we should install some nice new regulatory signs on a lot of these roadways. One of our recommendations is the, some intersection revisions. This is an interesting location, this is one of your roundabouts, at Lockney Avenue and Kennewick Avenue on the right here. But look at how the orientation, it's offset, okay? So people can run straight through this without stopping and essentially going against the movement of the roundabout. Roundabouts, you're supposed to go counterclockwise. I don't think we saw anybody go around the clock, the roundabout to go through on this movement.
Very, very few.
Okay, very few.
You go up and through, I do.
There's an easy fix, okay? We don't, we don't do anything with the roundabout, we install one of these splitter islands, okay? The roadway approach is nice and wide, we install a splitter island to push people to the right, make them go around the roundabout, okay? I guarantee you folks, it's to slow people down around that roundabout, because right now, they're blowing right through it, okay? Recommendation number three is another example, Kirkland Avenue and Kennewick, this intersection was amazing to me, it's wide open, okay? It's no wonder people speed through this area, it's just a wide expanse of- the right here. But, look at how the orientation, it's offset, okay? So people can run straight through this without stopping, and essentially going against the movement of the roundabout. Roundabouts, you're supposed to go counterclockwise. I don't think we saw anybody go around the clock, the roundabout to go through on this movement.
Very, very few.
Okay, very few.
There's an easy fix, okay?
We don't, we don't do anything with the roundabout, we install one of these splitter islands, okay? The roadway approach is nice and wide, we install a splitter, a splitter island to push people to the right, make them go around the roundabout, okay? I guarantee you folks, it's to slow people down around that roundabout, because right now, they're blowing right through it, okay? Recommendation number three is another example, Kirkland Avenue and Kennewick, this intersection was amazing to me, it's wide open, okay? It's no wonder people speed through this area, it's just a wide expanse of asphalt. I'm not sure what the history behind this area is, and, and, you know, how this, this area developed and, and, and grew, but it's, it's pretty interesting that, that Kirkland is such a wide roadway. So, uh, with the help of John, we came up with some, a couple different options, I mean, any way to let, to reduce the width, okay? Let's, let's build this up a little bit, and make a true intersection out of it, okay? Because you come up to this wide intersection now, it's really tough to figure out who has right-of-way, okay? Who, who has the, the, the free movement, if any? So let's, let's tighten things up a little bit, and there's even enough room to do a nice roundabout in there with, with some nice splitter islands in that area, without too much impact on right-of-way, okay? Help me out, John, is this one that we, uh, also did? Yes, okay. Um, uh, some comments about the chicanes. Well, this is one where we recommended chicane. Uh, again, we recommended it on Wildwood, because we did identify that as being the most significant speeding roadway, okay? Um, if, 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 and, and by the way, this location, our preliminary suggestion is a speed hump, but if that doesn't work, let's implement a one-way, um, chicane, that'll really slow people down. It is true, okay? I agree. Chicanes take up real estate, they take up parking, uh, and, and they need to be located in such an area where they will not impact people's driveways to their residences, okay? So, it's an easy thing for me to say, oh, install a chicane, but please understand, I say that with realizing that it takes some engineering behind it, somebody would have to go out and design this properly, okay? And I'm impressed that you guys in your neighborhood actually took some chalk out and had a look at it, because some of these islands are, are, can be pretty big, and it's important that people in, along the roads are, uh, in support of something like this, okay? So I personally think, we personally think, and we believe, and we recommend that Wildwood would benefit from a more drastic traffic-controlling device, something above and beyond this speed hump, okay? Okay, alright, so we need some, so, well, let me, let me finish, and I'll, and I'll answer that question, that's a great, great question, okay? Uh, Neighborhood Number Three, this is the last neighborhood, okay, wrapping up here. Um, do we have a blow-up here? Yeah, here's a blow-up of the intersections of, of the volume. Um, we essentially confirmed, and, uh, people in neighborhood would say, well, you know, you're wasting time, but we've confirmed on paper that Sligo Mill and Fourth Avenue are definitely cut-through traffic, and they're cut-through traffic during morning and evening and any time of the day, okay? Um, it was interesting, we, during our presentation, our public meeting presentation, uh, we had a lot of people talk about, well, you know, what people do is they come, they actually do this little Z-movement from Kansas, make a right turn, then a left turn onto Fourth Avenue, other people were cut straight through. Well, you know, the reason why that is, is that, uh, there's a four-way stop here on Kansas, okay? So it's easier to access the neighborhood through that way, okay? Um, and, and a lot of, of, of cut-through movement to six fifty here. Okay, there's a blow-up, volumes, just support. Travel Time Study, again, proves, you know, point D to point A, this is just, from point D, this area to point A, it's much faster to cut through the neighborhood than to come down to this big intersection, make a left turn, okay? It's faster by a minute, or almost two minutes, okay? And it's not a long distance, if you were to measure this, on how long distances, it's not a long distance at all, a minute and four, or fifty seconds is, is, um, a long time for the short distance, okay? Speed Study, yes, there's some speeding, Sligo Mill Road, Fourth Avenue, and even Kansas and Poplar Avenue have speeding, they have speeds, eighty-fifth percentile speeds greater than twenty-five miles an hour, okay? So two of the three neighborhoods, we proved that there, you do have a speeding problem, we need to do, implement some, some devices, some traffic calming devices. And here's our busy table, again, you can just look at some of those eighty-fifth percentile speeds up and down, we've got a thirty-three right here in both directions, um, that's Poplar Avenue, okay? So here are recommendations. We are recommending quite a number of speed hump locations, and yes, this was also a neighborhood that when you enter into the neighborhood, nobody tells you, or, or there are no signs that tell you what the speed limit is, okay? So we need definite upgrades in, in the advisory speed limit signs and turn restriction signs. Allow me to, uh, mention this turn restriction sign. There's a great turn restriction sign here that really limits people coming in, but you can't see it, okay? So we actually recommend a change to that location-wise. However, we also even recommend that some of those t- turn restriction signs are out of date, and really need to be reviewed in further detail. Uh, we also recommend a chicane location. Help me out, John, it's, the chicane is on Fourth Avenue, it's, I'm sorry, it's a Poplar up here, close to where a school is, uh, is an ideal location for the Poplar, just geometrically, uh, makes a lot of sense there, okay? And that, I'm not sure if it was twenty minutes, but we cruised right on through, was essentially, in a nutshell, the study, uh, summary of our study results. And I think we open it up to a couple questions. Allow me to answer, uh, this latest question about a chicane. Um, allow me to put another picture up, real quick. Okay, I, I guess I didn't explain this well enough, what a chicane is. Chicane is essentially the location, some strategic location of islands, okay, of bump outs, that make a tra, a vehicle zigzag through this area, okay? That zigzag requires people to slow down, okay? Now, the most preferred dynamic is a single lane, as you can see, this is only wide enough for a single lane of traffic, so you physically have to stop and allow alternating traffic, okay? Please see, it takes up a lot of real estate, okay? You need a lot of people on board, if you're gonna do this, but I guarantee you, they work, they work real well, okay? Alright, now, I will exit out.
Well, thank you very much for that presentation. Um, I'd like to allow people to ask any specific questions they have, and then have a discussion, um, by the council of what our next steps ought to be. So, um, I, I would be interested if, uh, people have specific questions about the presentation, if they would, uh, come forward, and I, and I would also ask if you can do the same thing we did at the earlier public comment period, and, uh, introduce yourself, and also, um, I'm really putting the three-minute timer on, just because I know we have a lot of people here, and people may very well want to, um, um, speak, and so I wanna make sure people, everybody has a chance to do that, so, Norm, you get to be the first one.
Okay, I'm Norm Gleitman, I'm at seventy-one thirteen Central Avenue, and I have a question on the, I have a question, and then I have a comment. Question is on Figure Two in the report, on Flower Avenue, you have two arrows going northbound on the right-hand side of the street, um, and they have different numbers of vehicle, vehicles going up the street, and I'm trying to figure out why that is, what those two sets of numbers represent, and you also have two sets of nor, numbers going northbound on Garland. But what's the difference? Why, why those?
So, we tried to, uh, show that in the legend, in the, in the lower left-hand corner, maybe we didn't make it clear enough, but essentially, we, we collected data during the morning peak period, two hours during the morning, and, and two hours in the afternoon, at a minimum. And those volumes are essentially, is the morning, highest morning peak hour, and the highest afternoon peak hour, so the top number's always the.
No, I understand that, but I'm saying.
Oh, I'm sorry.
You've got two sets of those.
Okay.
One going northbound, near the sort of. Southern end on Flower, and then about halfway up the street, you have another set.
Oh, I'm sorry. Um, the, the, the one set, and, and maybe we, we, you're looking at, for instance, two oh five and the two oh four.
Versus, right.
Up there, versus the one eighteen and the one thirty-sixer, okay? I, I'm sorry, now I understand.
Okay.
Um, the two oh five and the two, the, the higher, the numbers toward the north are essentially the numbers that, um, are on that link closer to the Carroll Avenue intersection, okay? Whereas the numbers to the south are the numbers on that link closer to the Garland-Flower Avenue intersection. Now, you'll ask, why the difference, right? Is that fair? The difference is, um, the difference in peak hours, okay, there's, there may be fifteen minutes off between peak hours, and there's also, during peak hours, when you have most of the traffic entering in and exiting from and to the neighborhood, okay? So there's a lot of, uh, traffic entering the system from the neighborhood as well.
Well, are those different vehicles, the one eighteen, different cars than the two oh five, you're not counting them again, up there?
Uh, no, we are likely call, counting them again, yes.
But with additional cars that you didn't count before?
Most likely, additional cars from, that were generated from the neighborhood.
I see, okay. So.
And, and if you want, um, be happy to show you the origin of these numbers.
No, I don't.
Okay.
And by the way, I'm against the airport, too.
Nobody brings, picks me up on that.
Um, so, I, you obviously, you know, spent some time on this, and I appreciate that, and I'm sure my neighbors do, too. Um, the problem with your report is that it solves a problem we don't have, and it doesn't solve a problem we do have, which is shown by the report. The report demonstrates that we don't have a speeding problem, and we do have a cut-through problem, a very serious cut-through problem, and the solutions are based upon solving the speeding problem because of this meeting of May sixteen, two thousand and seven. It was already stated, um, by Eileen and Emily, that the neighborhood has not had a chance to really come together and come to grips with the various problems, and in part, the neighborhood is not fully, or was not fully informed about what the problems really are. Uh, we now have a little better window into what the problems really are, and they're not what those people who chose to attend that meeting, I was not one of them, uh, thought they were. Uh, so, the solutions here are inadequate to our problem, and we do need to have a way of, uh, revisiting what we think the problem is, based upon this data question, should we have had the data first and then had the meeting? Possibly. Uh, but, clearly, uh, the speed bumps, I'm no traffic engineer, but the speed bumps and the stop signs, which we have now, which are being ignored and not enforced, uh, both, uh, are not solving our, our cut-through problem. And I think that a more robust solution has to be at least considered. I happen to live on a section of Central Avenue that's not gonna be affected by any solution that you come up with, or fail to come up with, because it's the dead-end portion, and there's no traffic on it, period, except local traffic. But obviously, we have neighbors who are greatly affected by cut-through traffic, and we have to be very concerned about what that does to our neighborhood. So, I think we have to revisit the premise, I think, um, we have to consider things like making the bottom of Flower, where it intersects Sligo Creek Parkway, uh, perhaps one-way. It's the only ingress into the neighborhood from the south, and it may be that by making that a one-way street, you prevent half the cutoff, cu- cut-through traffic.
Yeah, well, I, I, I appreciate those thoughts. One of the things that perhaps I could, uh, say at this point is, when we get to the council discussion, I'm gonna recommend that we add another, um, step to the process. Um, I think we need a step between the results coming out and the recommendations coming forward to the council, and that's an opportunity for the neighborhoods to, uh, look at the data, which you haven't had until recently, and look at the recommendations, and talk, you know, get, first of all, an explanation of what these things mean. I agree, it's not immediately obvious, and you all have, I'm sure, done a very good job, but, you know, the, some of the engineering terms aren't immediately obvious, and the data sometimes takes a little while to figure out what it means. But I think that, um, we should provide an opportunity for, um, an explanation to the people who are affected of why these recommendations were chosen, sort of a back-and-forth opportunity, rather than this which is fairly limited. I mean, the idea was, this would be presented to all of us, and then the council, at that point, decides what the next step are, is, and I'm gonna suggest that we have an opportunity for back-and-forth, um, between the experts and the neighbors, um, either all the neighborhoods together or singly, um, before it comes formally forward to the council, so that you can get those kinds of questions answered, and if you have an additional idea, you can discuss it with the people who know, and they can say, that's a great idea, this is what it would do, or, we didn't recommend that because, da-da-da-da-da, you know, there's some downsides to it. And I think that would probably be helpful to everybody.
I think, I agree with that, I appreciate you giving us an opportunity to, to have that discussion, and, uh, despite the fact that my red light is on, I wanted to say one last thing here, and that is, on page one, uh, the statement appears in the report that, you know, speeding was a bigger concern than cut-through traffic, and now I'm quoting, because the community acknowledged that the public has the right to use these roadways. And yes, we all agree that the public has the right to use the roadways, which is not inconsistent with, uh, getting some of the cut-through traffic diverted onto other roadways which were built to handle them. Thanks.
Thank you.
I'm Deb Gordon, I live on Central Avenue between Davis and Jackson. Um, I'm a member of a little committee that was set up at our two thousand six annual meeting, Neighborhood Association meeting, a traffic calming study group, and we've been meeting for over a year, uh, looking at problems, discussing the problems, and wanting to set up not a one-street solution, but a neighborhood-wide solution. Uh, I was at that meeting in May, and I am amazed and dismayed that you took us to mean that we didn't have a cut-through problem in the Long Branch Sligo Creek neighborhood, because we do, and I watch it from my deck all the time, regularly. The only thing is, and we do have a speeding problem, and we do have a problem with people not observing the stop signs, even our school buses. The only thing is, over this summer, we have had chicanes on Central Avenue, which did slow the traffic down and was, and the chicanes were there while you were doing your traffic study. The chicanes were in the form of the large utility work vehicles, because of the work being done on Davis and Jackson, and they were parked on Central just before the four-way stop sign, along with supplies, and it made for a quieter summer for traffic, but it doesn't get rid of the problem. So we do have a big cut-through problem, and we would like some specific recommendations, eventually, for addressing those problems. And we do, I do have one question, um, from your report. Now I wanna turn to the page, the, uh, uh, Speed Study, print out, onwards, uh, Neighborhood Speed Study, Speed Study, there is a number on the line for Hilton Avenue, uh, the number fourteen, could you interpret that, please? North, Hilton Avenue, North Trescott Avenue, there's fifteen, then twenty-one, then fourteen, what does that fourteen represent?
It's, it's the percent of traffic of all the collected data during the speed data that was driving at a speed greater than twenty-five miles an hour.
Okay, okay.
So, so having said, so what that means, it's, it's an interesting observation, by the way, that although the eighty-fifth percentile speed on that road was twenty-one miles an hour, you still had some speeding vehicles.
Oh, yes.
To make up that fifteen, the remaining fifteen percent.
And we have a wide-open swath from, on Central, on Jackson, and then to Central, and then to Carroll, both directions.
Yep.
Both directions.
Sure.
So, thank you.
My name is, you hear me?
Yes.
My name is Miss Isha, I live in Maple Avenue. Uh, my first question is, is this a study for the entire city, yes or no?
No, it's a study for three specific neighborhoods.
Okay, what happened to our neighborhood just here? The two main avenues, Philadelphia and Maple Avenue?
The, the council made a decision to, um, contract for traffic studies. Um, we asked for all the neighborhoods who were interested in having traffic studies to make a proposal to the council, and the councils of those various neighborhoods that came forward and made the request, we selected, uh, three, and those are the three that have had the studies, um, done of them. The council, um, has put additional funding in this, um, coming, in this current budget to do additional traffic studies, and I imagine we will do the same thing again, which is to ask for, um, other neighborhoods who are interested in having traffic studies to make a proposal to the council and ask for that. So if you are interested in having a traffic study in your neighborhood in the next round, um, you should, uh, get together with your other neighbors and decide what you would like. you should get together with your other neighbors and decide what you would like to have done in the area you'd like to have covered.
Madam Mayor, you used to be a nice mayor, but now I'm wondering. In the past, I, we don't have much time. I have graduate studies to do, finish, work full-time. But in the past, I think it was more than a year ago, you talked about traffic calming here on these two avenues because everybody comes through here dashing, very speeding. The cameras, they don't care about those cars, and you told me those cars are not a safety.
The purpose of this period right now is to talk about comments on those specific traffic studies. I would be happy to talk to you some more.
Why we were talking, because the other portion of this street, Avenue, Maple Avenue.
Can I suggest, I'm going to have my office hours tomorrow evening, if you'd like to come and talk to me. I'd be happy to talk to you about it.
I'm talking about our rights. The half of this Maple Avenue is single houses and they have speed humps. The rest are rentals and you forgot about them. Philadelphia, the same thing. Portion of it is Silver Spring, it's not our city. And the other portion, most of them, you know, you instituted some islands over there. I know all of this, I observed. We are nearly to be hit and cut in two pieces, many times, even the weekends. Everybody comes and dashes through here. I used to come from, I commute. When I leave Silver Spring behind the subway where I work, it used to be nine minutes to come here. Now, it's 30 minutes, it's excruciating. Everybody's coming here, why you forget this? And you were talking about straightening the two avenues, all of those. I have the papers and you forgot about that because people never come to the meetings. I was busy lately, but I always came. And this is not right. I don't want to have any hidden council meeting with you or something.
Well, I would be happy to talk to you more about it if you'd like.
You should have included our concerns. And there was two petitions you received more than three years ago. I talked to single house owners in this street, Philadelphia, which is part of Silver, Tacoma Park, and the Maple Avenue. They send you petitions. What did you do with their petition? I don't know. That's my question.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, Eileen Sebick from Carroll Avenue, Neighborhood 1. And I did come to the May 16th meeting as well. And I guess, you know, those were useful meetings and we did get citizen input, but it was a very small number of people from each neighborhood. It was half a dozen at most from each neighborhood. And I'm a little bit worried about you characterizing what, you know, six people who happen to be free on a given evening thought was a priority for the neighborhood. And I was there and, well, I mean, I, I. Cut-through traffic is important to me and is important to Deb. And my recollection is that it was at least co-equal. And your conclusion was that there was significant cut-through traffic on Flower Avenue and these other avenues. But I think that the characterization that the neighborhood input was speeding was a priority and cut-through traffic was not, is going to get people off on a tangent. People are concerned and I think we'd be really careful about, A, what was really said and B, overgeneralizing from a very small sample. But I agree with Norm, we need to just move on from that. I wanted to just put on the table something else that was discussed that night and is going to come up in subsequent discussions, which is there was major WSSC roadwork in our neighborhood at the time that the survey was done or immediately before. And, you know, if you're a habitual cut-thruer, you know what streets are being ripped up and you then ignore them. And it did slow people down. And we went sort of round and around about whether we should put off, the option seemed to be do the study or not do the study and not know exactly when you could do it again. So, I just think that that's going to come up in future discussions and we need to be prepared to discuss it and how that might have affected the speed numbers that were involved. And I do agree with comments that other people have said is that the measures that were recommended basically reinforced the existing measures, reduce cut-through traffic and force it, in most parts of the neighborhood, and force it onto Flower Avenue. And I will also just give you a preview that I would say the neighborhood is pretty deeply divided about what to do about Flower. Some people would like to just see a giant wall built on Flower and other people are really, really, really upset about that possibility. So, it will clearly be a topic for discussion in the future. But, you know, I'm really worried that it discourages people from participating in the public, the public, the pre-survey period if then they get the blame for participating and, you know, skewing what the neighborhood wants. I mean, I think part of why we went was to get some advice about, maybe we thought the problem was speeding, but it really was cut-through. Or we thought the problem was cut-through, but no, it really is speeding. And my one question is, did you, and I haven't been able to peruse this thing in great detail. Did you guys note the states of the tags of the vehicles that were identified as engaging in cut-through rates? I mean, do we know if it was, you know, if it was Marylanders or DC? I mean, is it, we don't have that data?
No, we do not have that data. We just noted the license plate number, not the origin of the plates.
Okay, thanks.
My name is Leon Brunson. I live on the corner of Lockney and Anne. And I'm well aware of the traffic problems on Anne Street. One of the problems may be that the cut-through traffic can be a result of the work that's being done on University Boulevard. And if you're on that Boulevard any time, morning or night, from Piney Branch to Riggs Road is backed up. And those cars are making a right turn on Anne Street and come down to Wildwood, Lockney, Kennewick, and back to New Hampshire Avenue. In the mornings, school buses stop on Anne Street and Wildwood. Afternoon traffic from Carroll Avenue comes down to Anne Street, make a left turn on Anne up to Lockney and a left turn up Lockney. Traffic is heavy there. If you go, in the morning, we have stop signs on Lockney, on the east side and the west side. They're generally obeyed, they may do a rolling stop. Up on the corner of Lockney and Kirkland, we need a sign because it's coming around that corner and they come around at great speed. Now, one of the concerns we have, the study group, we don't know who represented New Hampshire Garden. You have a former vice president here who made the study in 1993. The new, the association made another study and participated in the master plan. And our recommendations are in the master plan. The same recommendations that the study group is making are in the master plan. So, from 1993 to 2007, this information is there. Now, when we're talking about those circles, those circles on Anne, on Lockney, poorly designed, they're not attractive. I was up there this weekend, no maintenance. And that will continue to be a problem, maintain them, maintaining them in an attractive way so that we who live on that street can appreciate the beauty of having a pleasant neighborhood. Now, as far as the chicanes, am I saying that correctly? The chicanes. We've talked to people in that area and on our streets and in the community. It's a no-no unless we can come up with a better plan. It's a no-no. So, we, so any suggestions that are made, and I would say that right here now, that any future meeting dealing with New Hampshire Gardens, I think some of the old timers should be there and be a part of it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
And I have some pictures I want to show you about the commercial parking that Mr. Brady has addressed. And it has been a tremendous parking over the years. And I took some pictures, I think you should see them.
Okay, thank you. Yes.
Hi, my name is Geraldine Penated. I live in the corner of Wildwood and Jackson in New Hampshire Gardens. So, I see the problem in Wildwood every day since it's the corner where I live. I want to point out that they were right, there is no signs whatsoever of what is the speed limit. There are stop signs that are missing or they're not in the right place or covered by trees or whatever. So, that's a big problem. There are also bumps that they are not, they're very old. They need to be replaced or redone. Also, like my neighbor said, I think one of the solutions, I mean, Wildwood goes from the south to the north and you cut through Langley Park. So, you don't need to go over there where all the mess is. Every Saturday is such a big traffic jam over there because everybody goes shopping. And every day of the week, during the morning and during the evening, yes. I mean, Wildwood is just like the highway, everybody take it. And I don't know if a solution that will be cheap. It might be just cut part of Wildwood, say, do not enter and direct that traffic again to New Hampshire Avenue or University Boulevard. I don't know if that might be, but I mean, that would be cheaper than even putting something else. Those are just suggestions that I was thinking about. Anyways, what else? The chicanes, we already had chicanes natural be made by the cars that are parked in Wildwood. Between Anne Street and Kirkland or even Jackson, there are cars all over the place. So, we need to just stop for the other people passing by. So, we already had that. But even sometimes you're stuck in the stop sign and there are people behind you, they just pass you and they don't even stop. So, I think the chicanes is not going to be, I don't know. I think you guys need to rethink about it. As I was saying, so young people, we find it very attractive. There's a lot of cars passing by with their music already. So, if they see there's a zigzag, it's going to be even better for them to have fun. And especially at night. I mean, I just telling you what I feel and I've been living there for like two years. Since it's a cut-through, me and a neighbor of mine, oh, I'm going to be, I'm wrapping up. We have been having garbage dump in our garden all the time. I don't know why, but it's increasing and the neighborhood is really looking bad. Just one more thing, we don't have sidewalk in Wildwood. Everybody that wants to go to the bus stop to take the bus to the metro, they need to go on the street. And it's a really risky thing, even for the kids. The kids are waiting for the bus in Jackson and Wildwood and in Anne and Wildwood. There's no sidewalks whatsoever, so I don't think that's safe either. So, those are just suggestions. Thanks.
My name is David Gordon. I live on Central Avenue in Long Branch-Slygo. A question regarding the study. In the study, you mentioned that the speeding was 85 percentile, I believe, which means that 85% were on or below the speed limit. Is that correct? In Long Branch and Sligo.
I think he was talking about how that was the speed, how speed limits were set.
In the speeding in the survey, you said that 85% was on or below the 25 mile an hour speed limit.
No, no. What we note in the table is being the 85th percentile speed. And each road has a different 85th percentile speed. But whatever that number says, that number means that 85% of the traffic are driving at or below that speed.
Fine, well, okay. In your opinion, and obviously you're very experienced, well, you are, the fact that there was so much work being done on Davis and on Jackson, considering that Jackson was a cut-through road, Central Jackson-Hilton, in your opinion, if the survey had been done following the work and the roads had been repaved, would you, would you agree that your, that your study figures may not be correct?
They would be different.
What I'm saying is that because there were a lot of work vehicles, lorries, even on the corner of Jackson and Central, a large hill of material used for paving roads. What I'm saying to you is that this is going to generate, as my wife said earlier, chicanes and therefore people are going to slow down because they don't want to damage their cars. I'm asking you what in fact I believe, it's my opinion, that because of that, the speeding through the area would have been drastically reduced while you were making your study. Thank you.
Are there any additional comments or questions, is what I mean?
My name is Geneva Simmons and I live on Flower Avenue, about five houses up from Garland where it is very narrow and cars can park on one side of the street. And we've got a few speed humps, but that is not deterring the cut-through traffic. And in your recommendation, it looks like to kind of upgrade the speed humps and get better signage in there. But I'm not so sure that that is going to do anything different than what it's doing now. So, my question to you would be, what else would you recommend? Say we do that and that doesn't work. What else would you recommend for Flower because it's such a narrow street?
Yeah, Flower is a problem street. It's because of its width. Quite honestly, not the area where you live, but the northern area that's even less wide, the 18-foot wide, that's not even conducive to installing a chicane. It's very limiting roadway and it's very highly traveled. We recognize that. So, you're really somewhat limited to what you can and cannot do. And you're absolutely right, that section, you have at least four speed bumps in that section between stop signs already. I do recommend that those speed humps need to be upgraded. Okay, I think you'll see a measured difference if those are the proper design. It's just worn down. Not saying they were incorrectly installed in the first place, they're just worn down and they need to be reinstalled. These things wear out. And I think you'll see a measured difference if you do that. People, a properly designed speed hump really slows people down. And any of the speed bumps, you know, especially in this neighborhood, we identify that they need to be upgraded.
So, you think in slowing people down, then it will deter them from taking that route?
So, you know, you're allowing me to, an opportunity to discuss, you know, maybe something that I wasn't very clear on. During the pre-meeting of the study, when we talked about this neighborhood, maybe I misspoke, but really our concern was not to even forget about cut-through traffic, okay? Our focus was, we got the indication from the residents who attended the meeting that we don't want to get as drastic as installing some of those cut-through limiting medians, okay? The residents seems to agree that, you know, this is a public road and we need to maintain access. We just can't build this, somebody mentioned the wall, okay? So, this doesn't mean that we threw out, oh, we're not even looking at cut-through traffic because you're absolutely right, we did mention it. Cut-through is a problem here, we're identifying that as being a problem, okay? But if we can't install these medians to really limit cut-through, what do we have? Well, what we can do is strategically locating some of these speed-reducing devices like speed humps and tables, okay? It is very true, you install these, yes, you slow down speeds, but yes, you also divert traffic if you put these in strategic locations. So, I'm sorry if I misspoke, but these speed-reducing devices, yes, they're focused on speed. If you put enough of them out there, you will deter traffic from being there, okay? So, to answer your question, I think in your section of roadway, those four or five speed humps need to be upgraded. Above and beyond that, we can look at it. I think the 24-foot width, maybe, you know, we could do a chicane or maybe a bump, you know, a physical, a visual width reduction, okay? Maybe putting some edge lines and kind of reducing the width. If people think they have less of a wide roadway to drive on, they'll slow down as well. There are some options on that road. But again, I want to, I think we need to build this and let's reconstruct those humps currently and we'll go from there, okay? This is an iterative process, okay? And I think everybody in the town understands that and the city understands that. Is, you know, this first study identifies the problems. Let's get, you know, shovel the pavement and try some things and do an after-study and figure out, well, what really worked and what didn't, okay? Because every neighborhood is different, okay? There's not just one fix, every neighborhood is different.
Thank you.
I hope I answered your question.
Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate the people who've had questions and suggestions and I appreciate you all. um, you all answering those questions. Um, it, it makes me even, think even more that we need to have, we need to provide an opportunity for this dialogue to continue. I'm not sure that doing it in front of the city council when we have the pressures of a schedule to keep is the best time to do it. Maybe we could have a, you could have a public meeting or a meeting with the neighborhood associations or whatever, um, would be most useful. But I think there is another step that needs to happen before, there's a public hearing or before this comes to the council for there to be more of this back and forth, um, discussion about other ideas with why this, the recommendations that were made were made and why other, other recommendations weren't made. And I think it could be very helpful to get those things ironed out before it comes back to us. Does the council make?
Yes, Ruben, just, oh, sorry.
Ruben has been waiting for quite a second.
Yeah, I have a relatively, relatively quick observation. Um, uh, for those residents, um, I live near some of these neighborhoods. Um, we had a very, when I first moved to my neighborhood almost twenty years ago, um, or more than twenty years ago, we had a, uh, both speed and cut-through problem on Erie Avenue. People would go from Mavel Avenue to Flower and they would cut through on Erie. And, um, the cut-through was bad enough, but the, um, speeding meant that there were accidents. There were, um, two or three every single year, uh, right in front of our house. So I actually got to see them happening. Um, people were just going too fast and could not make a very small turn. If there was another car there, they'd smash into the other car. There were just fender benders all the time. And the intersection, um, nearby had the problem that it was one of these very wide ones like you were describing. So people could really get up a good speed and whether there was a stop sign there or not didn't matter, people would just go through it. But the point is because of the shape of the intersection, they could maintain their speed as they entered Erie Avenue. The city very graciously, after we petitioned, of course, um, put in, uh, not only some speed humps, but also, and signage, but also, um, reconfigured the intersection. And, um, those measures had the effect of reducing the speed on the street. We haven't had an accident in years. We used to have them every couple of months. Um, we haven't had one in, in years as a result. It's not that there's no cut-through traffic, there's plenty of cut-through traffic. Um, it's not that people don't go faster than they should. I hear them bottoming out, you know, on the, uh, when they go over the speed bumps, but the general effect is much, much better. So I, I, I urge folks to listen to what, uh, was said, which is that these are not going to completely solve the problem. They are going to attenuate the problem. And they are relative, the speed bumps are, as, as was discussed, relatively inexpensive and, um, the city can try them out. They don't work, just look at Mavel Avenue. We put in speed bumps, they weren't high enough and we put in, uh, amazing ones now. They're speed hills or whatever they should be appropriately called, um, and, and those have had an impact. So I, I urge folks to, um, have discussions, think about what kinds of things they're willing to accept in the neighborhood, but, but to recognize that these measures do have an impact.
Okay.
Yes, uh, just on the, briefly on the issue of, uh, process, uh, this by no means is the end of the discussion, um, and we will be coming back, uh, to the neighbors and the neighborhood. The mailing, of course, was an important piece of this, uh, but there'll be plenty of opportunities for discussion and, and none of the, the suggested remedies, uh, will take effect until, uh, every, we've made every effort to make sure that everyone has been consulted with. Uh, one point though, for history purposes, uh, we've had some horrendous fights up here, uh, in the past couple of years on where to put the speed bumps and whether we should put the speed bumps and how high the speed bump should be. There's, people have almost come to blows here, uh, over whether there should or shouldn't. And believe me, uh, as Ruben said, we have some humdingers of speed bumps in this town. Uh, in fact, one of the council members, who's no longer with us, said he ripped his muffler out on one of them going six miles an hour. Uh, and then we have other ones where you literally can fly over them. And we're supposed to have a standard size for these bumps and we've discussed that before, but anybody who's driven around the town knows that there's at least four or five different kinds of speed bumps. And I think what you're saying is, is that that shouldn't happen by accident as it may have in this city. Uh, but maybe there are places where a, you know, the, the Mount Olympus, uh, of speed bumps should be placed and maybe Wildwood Avenue i- is one of them because you're right, the, some of them are so worn down by, by, uh, the traffic going over them that they're, they're little hillocks rather than mountains. So, um, uh, and then, you know, I think the other observation is, is that, uh, as long as I've lived on, on that side of town, uh, the volume of traffic on New Hampshire doubled in the last five years, it's gonna double again probably in two or three years. So we have to look at taking some major steps potentially in that area to limit the amount of cut-through traffic that we already have. I think when University Boulevard, uh, improvements are, uh, completed, there, there may be less cut-through, but we're still gonna have it. And as soon as we finish the work on University, we're probably gonna start work on New Hampshire, you know, going towards Eastern Avenue because it's in a mess right now and the construction that's being proposed for it will put additional pressure on our side of town. Uh, I, I do think though, that I'd like to pla, place this report in the hand of the police chief tomorrow, hopefully it will go to him, uh, because all of the data that you provided, particularly the peak times, is wonderful for his officers, uh, who, you know, are already generally aware of the problems on that part of town, but now they actually have times, they have speeds, they have intersections and they can, they can go there and they can wait, uh, for these people. And there's nothing like a hundred and fifty dollar, you know, a speeding ticket, uh, to, to maybe think that, hey, this isn't worth the forty seconds, uh, we're gonna take off of our commute today, especially after we venture into these damned neighborhoods where we're gonna get stopped and, and cited. So, uh, I think, uh, part of the, part of the, uh, the solution is, uh, not bumps, but tickets. Uh, and I think the chief has been good about, uh, you know, assigning, uh, his folks, but there, there needs to be more enforcement than we have had. So, um, and then to, to echo what, uh, Ruben said, the new traffic circle that's at Glenside and, uh, and Wildwood, you know, in my limited and unscientific survey, uh, has, uh, limited, uh, the speed coming through that part of the area and probably has cut down the cut-through traffic to, to a certain extent. But again, the, the circles, which are relatively new to the city, uh, particularly the ones, uh, you know, further up, uh, on, on our side of town, um, you know, could be constructed, uh, better. And, and I think that the solution you have for the ones on Lockney is, it sounds like very reasonable. And as Leon pointed out, the, um, care and maintenance of those circles while not a, a traffic, uh, cut-through, uh, traffic calming issue, uh, we've gotta pay closer attention to making sure those places are maintained, that they don't become weed-filled, um, depositories for plastic containers that are thrown out. And what you said about, um, the, the buses, the school buses stopping, you know, right at or in the traffic circle there to let people off, I mean, this is unbelievable. And I think one of the things we might have to do is go after, uh, the school district and point out that some of their drivers, uh, are really, uh, you know, being completely irresponsible in the way that they are dropping and kids and picking, picking up kids. Now, the other, the last point, and I promised to shut up because it's getting late, is, uh, you, you mentioned about the circle that people seem to be, uh, uh, you know, careless when they're approaching them and they don't, they don't, um, adhere to the yield signs. I don't see in the report that you have made any specific recommendations for how to deal with that. Either people are unfamiliar with the, with the etiquette of circles, which may be the case, or, uh, they, they are just, uh, you know, stupid and suicidal. Um, or maybe it's a combination, but, uh, because they're, they're roaring down Glenside, approaching that traffic circle from the west, uh, wha, what can be done to make them adhere to the yield sign there or slow down as they approach it? They're coming now from Glenside, presumably down from Carroll, uh, they're approaching the traffic circle at, at three o'clock and your study shows and my observations and neighbors' obs, observation shows that they are wildly roaring past there, uh, not heating traffic that are, that is entering the circle from six o'clock. Anything we can do there?
Um, the, as a traffic engineer, the answer is, um, the, the signing and the pavement marking for some of these roundabouts are substandard. Um, when I say that, people cringe because the proper signing and pavement marking in an area like this in a neighborhood is not aesthetically pleasing. Um, but I think we can find a pleasant medium-
Okay.
-to, to, to look at. It's, uh, it's an interesting problem to try to meld the two.
Excellent. All right. Thank you very much.
Um, Bruce and then, Colleen.
Just, just in terms of a next step, um, I think we need to have the neighborhoods get together with you all and hash through some of these things, not in a venue like this. Uh, I'd just like to point out that, uh, nobody from Pinecrest is here because, uh, there, in my understanding, was this was gonna be a presentation that was scheduled for a half an hour. We're now at three times that length getting into, uh, some specifics on this. And I'd like to see this wrap up and see, uh, some details gone into with the neighborhoods, either separate meetings or a series of three meetings with you all here once to go through and everybody has some time to understand some of the implications of this and get some, some more questions answered.
Colleen.
Um, a couple of, a couple of things for the, for the future. I, I agree with everything that all my constituents said, so I don't wanna belabor all of those points. But I do wanna say, in the future, if we don't get the study out in time, we should probably postpone the, the presentation because the folks in my ward are pretty unhappy about that. And, um, we had the study, we've had it since June, but we were waiting for the translation into Spanish and of course I want everyone to be able to have access to it, but it's, it's, it's kind of a shame. Um, the other thing is that when we first started this process, I expressed to the contractor that I thought there wasn't gonna be a lot of confidence in the study done in the Long Branch Sligo area due to the road work and talked a lot and tried to say, hey, let's postpone this, let's do another one, um, let's put it off to the next year. It's not like we don't control the budget, we couldn't have, we couldn't have done that pretty easily. You know, I work for the feds, it would be impossible to do that there, but here we had control and we should have done that. Because I think what we have now is a study that the neighborhood doesn't have confidence in. There's no confidence in your numbers and I think that was expressed by a, a lot of the, a lot of the people. And so where does that leave us with this as a, as a planning tool to go forward? Um, and I think that, um, you know, I'm a community development planner by trade, I'm not a traffic engineer, but, um, I think maybe you should add a community development planner to your staff because, because they would have expressed that to you and I think maybe could have done some, some better outreach to get more the, the, the key stakeholder folks involved. Um, that's just my, my plug for community development planners there. Um, the other thing is that I expressed to you that, um, who the people were that came to the May sixteenth meeting, who were the outliers of opinion in the community, but then I don't think that that was reflected in how the report was developed. Um, and I've looked at all three reports. I think that the Long Branch Sligo report tragically, since I really, really wanted to do the traffic study, um, is not very creative or responsive. Um, as, as Councilwoman Barry pointed out, there are all kinds of, uh, future issues that are, that are coming our way and there's no look to the future in this. There's no reflection of the past, uh, planning activities, no reference to those. Um, I once went into a community in West Oakland, California, and we were, we were gonna do a new plan for the community and I found out that there were already twenty-three unused plans on the shelf. So of course we didn't do a new plan, we looked at all the old plans, all the material was, was available there and we tried to develop, develop some kind of a value-added piece for that and that's what I feel like is missing here. This is a rehash of everything that we already know and there's not a value-added component to this for the Long Branch Sligo folks. I think that, um, in my opinion, the best recommendations have actually come out of the plan that came for Doug's, Doug's Ward and, um, there are a couple of, of good ideas in there. But, but the rest of it, I think, is already in existence and I think that we could have saved the money and taken Deb and Dave Gordon's plan that they did with the meetings with the traffic planning group and, and implemented those and, and it would have been just as good.
Well, um, I would like to get some sense of where the council is. Um, I put a suggestion on the table that there needed to be more back and forth between the experts and between, and the neighborhoods before, um, the council, um, had this come back to us. Um, Bruce seemed to be in accord with that. Is there a sense on the council that we'd need to do that?
Is that part of the existing contract?
Um, I don't believe it is. Did you say it was or it wasn't?
Uh, the contract would have to be amended. I, I'm not, I actually am not sure, but I'd have to talk to it.
I, I'm not, I'm not particularly interested, interested in that. I, I, I've seen the work that our own planners can do and I know they have a hundred other things to do, but, um, you know, Alana came into our neighborhood and did great planning work and did great outreach and had great ideas.
One, I, one, one thing that may be useful though would be to look at, um, how to stop cut-through traffic and I think that, um, that that was something that I think that the smaller, the smaller representation from the neighborhoods at the initial meeting, people did not feel comfortable saying, we wanna cut off tra, we wanna put barriers-
Right, well, having, having-
That might be something to look at.
Having put the, I mean, the same thing happened when my neighborhood did the same thing many years ago. Um, once the recommendations came out, all the people who didn't wanna bother with the traffic study came out of the woodwork and came to the meetings. So, um, I think that you will have much better attendance at the meetings once they, once there is something concrete on the table and people either think it's wonderful or terrible and they will come to the meetings. So I think it's important that we do that step. Um, I think the majority of the council would be interested in doing that, certainly individual neighborhoods could opt out of it if they wanted to, but I think it would be, um, very helpful to help people sort of understand what was done and to, um, have some of this dialogue back and forth on other ideas or sort of other, um, questions or comments or thoughts that the neighborhoods have.
Thank you, Mayor Porter.
I'll just say I agree with Councilmember Clay that I have full confidence in Alana to, uh, to do the work, but I would defer to the city manager, uh, on, uh, whether her work schedule would permit that or whether we should in fact, uh, extend the contract so that we can-
Why don't we ask Alana to, um, get some more information? I think the neighborhood meeting would be a good idea. It seems that there's-
I agree.
-a consensus on the council that it would be a good idea, have Alana explore that as an option and then get back to us with some additional information. Um, thank you very much and I appreciate the study and certainly you've got some discussion going. No question about that. Um, I am gonna suggest to the council, we are running quite late, we have a number of people who've been waiting quite a long time. I'm gonna suggest to the council that we, and I noticed people have been getting up and getting food and drinks, that we not take a break. Um, there's a couple of members of the Board of Elections who've been waiting for quite a long time. And I'd like to do the election update and the county budget priorities and bump the living wage discussion, which I think will be a bit longer, to another meeting. And I'd like to just keep going without a break at this point. Um, I think we don't need to move the, um, the thing out of the way right now. If you guys have equipment you wanna get, take with you, that would be fine, but, um, in terms of the cart, I think we can leave it there and we'll just go ahead and see if we can't get through with the two, um, with two final items and then, uh, the council will probably be able to leave earlier. Uh, thank you all for coming and, uh, we would very much like to continue that dialogue and you've got some good ideas. Um, do we have the members of the Board of Elections here? Do you wanna come up to the table right now?
They've elected me to just come sit here.
I see, we have a representative of the Board of Elections.
They're down here for more support.
Can I, can I? I, I'm sorry, I'm gonna have to ask you to, um, just pause for a moment because you don't have a quorum of the council here and the council has to make a decision and I don't wanna do that if a majority of the council hasn't had an opportunity to hear your recommendations. All right. We have the other council members here. I wonder if you could go ahead and give us your, uh, presentation?
Yes, then I'll be free.
Thank you.
I'm Anne Sargent, I'm accompanied by Devlin Washington and Jane Johnson, sitting back in the chairs for moral support. They decided they wanted me to make the presentation here. Um, you have the handout, I'm sure, but I'll just briefly run through what's on there. So far, we have reviewed the election timetable, and, um, Jessie's made us copies of the city charter and code related to the election, and I have discovered that car appointments are really good for meeting such things. We've set a schedule for meetings, which is, um, every other Tuesday, mostly, sometimes we have every Tuesday. We reviewed our options and recommended that the election, that the building here be used for the election, sort of a single polling place. We think that people will fit, and it's less confusing to just have one person, one place for people to go to. And we have looked at how the logistics of getting people to flow through the space might work. And there, a couple weeks ago, there was a, maybe it was, yeah, two weeks ago, there was a demonstration by True Ballot Incorporated. They have an optical scan system that, um, it looks like a little fax machine, and you just put the ballots in there, the paper ballots, the people marked by hand, and it just goes sip, 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 and then it takes a, basically takes an image of the vote and then tallies it, and then it has a little system where it can flag the ones that are doubtful, so human eyes can decide what the correct, what the voter meant to do. And if wanted, it can be shown up on a video screen, or, sorry, it's painted on the wall. So we also talked about whether to use the electronic poll books that Montgomery County offered to provide to us, and I'll get into some recommendations about those two in a minute. We have arranged for voter registration training, which is going to be next week here in this building for us and whoever wants to volunteer to do it. And, uh, League of Women Voters is going to help us with that. They're also going to help us with a voter registration table at the Tacoma Park Folk Festival, since I'm community tables chair, I just made that happen.
So it's good to have those connections.
Yeah. And we're planning for review of election judge applications. There's an ad in this, um, month's, is it the newsletter, Tacoma Park Newsletter? There's a, there's a, a little solicitation there, and we'll be reviewing applications as they come in. Any questions about that so far?
And you have some...
Sorry?
What did you say, you also have some recommendations for us?
Yes, yes. The recommendations are, um, we've all hand counted, and we really like the idea of having an optical scan machine. It seems to work well, if they did a demo for us and it made sense, and they have, um, as you can see on the handout, um, they can pre-print ballots prior to the election and scan, review, and tally and audit the ballots. So what we like about it is, if there's ever any question, we actually have physical ballots. So if somebody wants to go back and scan it another way, if they want to count it by hand with their own eyes, they could do that. But we really like the idea of us not having to count them by hand. It's hard to do in a room full of people. We did, we do it in this room, as probably you all know, and the audience, it's not very interesting to watch, and the audience talks, and it makes it harder to count, let's just say. So we think that that, that system will be a good system, and they did also tell us that they could do ballots on demand, where the person, you could have a little barcode to scan each person's name, and it would automatically print them, the correct ballot for their ward, but that would cost significantly more, so we're thinking we would just go with the current, the ballot, sorry, the pre-printed ballots for now, and maybe we'd want to do it for another election, but not this time. And we also recommend that we do take Montgomery County up on their generous offer of lending them, lending us their poll books, um, because when they work, they work really nicely.
And when they don't?
Yeah, when they don't, they don't, but it, they've had, they've used them twice now, and I've been there for both times, and we also have, um, we have some experience with ways that you can kind of fail-safe it, like have a few extra cables and, um, they, they got off to a rough start, but I believe it works now. So, I don't think I need to read the rest of it. Oh, the fiscal impact, fifteen thousand dollars has been included in the budget for election expenses, and we're expecting the cost to remain within the budget.
So what you need from the council, if I understand, is you want our okay to go ahead and, and negotiate with True Ballot for a cost for this service?
Yes, that's what we're looking for.
And, um, also you want the okay to go with your recommendation to use the electronic poll books?
Yes.
What does the council think about that, really?
Well, as someone who enjoyed the drama of the, um, hand counting for my, my election earlier this year, um, I, I do understand that it was, it was pretty slow-going, um, and considering there are only 204 ballots, um, I can imagine when we had a couple thousand, which is what I hope we'll get for the city, it would, it would really be well into the night before we were, before we were done, so...
Yes, I can attest that it was well into the night.
So I, I, I agree. I, I think we should go with your recommendations.
And I would just say, Terry's probably going to say the same thing, I would just say that, uh, Terry Siemens and I were present for the demonstration, and he's, um, far more expert at this kind of system than I am, but I was impressed that you, the counting process could be totally transparent. They could, um, project up on the wall the process as it was happening, and you could sort of see, you know, the, the ballots going by, you could see them counting them up. And they also created an optical database of all the ballots and a, a data, database of all the ballots, all of which could be given to someone or put on the city's website. And so if somebody had an argument with the count, they could actually delve into looking at each ballot, paper by paper by paper, and, you know, satisfy themselves that it was okay, so...
And I didn't say that they would be able to provide us that on as many, well, on a CD and then we could...
On a CD.
As necessary, but it would be electronic and we'd have the original paper ballots.
Right, and the paper ballots would be there also. Terry, I'm sorry.
No, it's okay. Mayor Porter, uh, basically said what I was going to say. I did have the luxury of seeing the demonstration, uh, in the evening following your hand counting of Councilmember Snippers', uh, election, in the special election. Uh, it was impressive, even though they had not refined their system yet at that point, uh, that it came up with the same count, uh, and...
It's reassuring.
Yeah, and it was, uh, even later into the night than when you got done, uh, but then we saw the, um, the demonstration more recently with their completed system, and it is, uh, it's impressive because, uh, not only does it, uh, come up with right answers, but it, it gives that transparency of the projected image. And during the demonstration, we had the opportunity to fill in ballots and submit them, and, um, you know, I tried to beat the system and, uh, it, uh, by, you know, double marking things or having just a, a pen scratch across the paper, and, and it, it picked things up, uh, uh, the way I think, uh, any of us would, um, that when it was just a minor scratch across the page, uh, it ignored it, but when it was something that was a little more than minor, it threw it up on the screen and said, well, what does this mean? And asked for the human intervention. So I think it's a good system, and I would support your request.
Is there, is there consensus that to go forward with the recommendations of the Board of Elections? I see that there is. Thank you very much, we appreciate the, and we appreciate your setting up the demonstration. I find that very helpful. And there were a number of people from the community who attended the demonstration also, and there was an opportunity for some good discussion, so that, that was extremely helpful. And thank you for all the work that you're doing and will do in the future. Thanks.
Thanks.
Um, we also, the other item that we need to get through this evening is, um, some discussion of what, um, county budget priorities we would like to, um, include in our testimony so that, um, the testimony can be prepared in time for the, uh, public hearing. Suzanne?
Good evening. Yes, thanks for, uh, keeping me on the agenda. We do have a, a date issue with, uh, these upcoming matters, and I appreciate that. I'm here to talk about...
But I promised you'd be quick.
I'll be quick. Question is for you guys, I suppose. On September 11th, there will be a, a public hearing before the Emery County Council as the first step in their FY09 budget process, um, to identify budget priorities and performance measures for that, um, FY, it's, it's, actually, in the cover sheet it says FY08, but it's the FY09 county budget. The, um, we have the mayor sign up to testify at the hearing. Um, the time that's allotted for testimony is only three minutes. Uh, we certainly can submit longer, uh, items in writing, but, uh, they recognize that many people will have something to say. I requested some ideas for the kinds of topics that you might want to consider. I did, um, have some from previous testimony that we've given in the, in last year's budget, um, hearings, um, as well as some of the suggestions that were made by you. Those, um, deal with topics of affordable housing, protecting municipal funds during state and county budget processes, money for basic services for ultra-low-income county residents, um, supporting of New Hampshire Avenue redevelopment, uh, resolving issues related to tax duplication. Um, the, there are some, um, facilities that we have some shared interest in, uh, our bridges, um, I didn't hear there earlier, any earlier discussion, but the Coolip Piney Branch Elementary School's been, uh, raised many times now, recently. Um, there's also, um, big projects such as the Purple Line and our concerns with the development of the Tacoma Metro that's proposed. What your direction is to me, I will write some draft testimony and circulate it around for that hearing. The, this is the first stage in the process. The county council will start to deal with this. Um, they won't receive an actual budget until mid-March from the county executive, um, and then we will be back testifying in April or so, when the actual, um, public hearings on the proposed budget are, are before the county council. So this is the first step in the process.
Any comments?
Your direction.
Bruce?
Yeah, um, I suggested the, uh, protecting municipal funds during state and county budget processes, um, feeling that it's, it's important to remind them that as the state goes through their difficult process of figuring out how to balance their budget, and some of that probably lands on the county, and they have their own issues to deal with, never mind the state issues, uh, that the impact of anything that they change in how they, uh, pass money along to us through various processes, uh, some of the programs that, uh, are distributed, state funds like, uh, CDBG, uh, I'm not sure about Open Space, but some of that stuff comes through the county, and, uh, if they were to make a unilateral decision to change that process, cut the municipalities out, uh, if they were to decide that, gee, they have to look for places to, uh, find things, and, gee, they're going to change the rebate formulas or any of those kinds of issues that it has a huge impact on us, and it's really not going to do much for them at all, fixing their, their bigger fish that they've got to fry. So, uh, just to say, hey, don't even take that under advisement as something, as someplace you think you want to go. Your problem, your problems may be bigger than that, and all you're going to do is give us headaches, and everything else kind of fits within the context of that.
If I might just interrupt, um, I think it's on September 17th, I'll be back before you related to state legislation, so not only are we going to have the discussions to, to the county council about budget and, and impacts on us, but we will, uh, within just a couple of weeks, be starting to craft our requests that, that protect our interests as the state puts in its budget.
Colleen?
I support all of the things that are listed. Is there any advantage to us limiting our testimonies to things that are just specific to Tacoma Park?
Oh, I'm sorry, I answered the question before I heard it. There is an advantage to our limiting the number of things we ask for, because there will be more, um, emphasis on them if there are fewer of them.
The, the letter from Marilyn Preisner that, that is attached, um, really asks for people to come in and talk about what kind of a priority listing. So if there's certain things that you feel have stronger weight or kind of bigger issues and then smaller ones subsets, that would be the kind of thing that she would be looking for personally.
Well, I, I guess, I would go with Bruce on the municipal funds and getting their buy-in in New Hampshire Avenue redevelopment and tax duplication. The top three, I guess, I'd be interested in, and the bridge, the metro, and the pool is second tier. It's not that I'm not interested in the other ones, it's that it seems like there's, there's a broader constituency for those, and I wonder if we should focus on ours, that there isn't such a broad constituency or...
I think we also need to think about what things that the county council can actually be effective on. And I would, I guess my recommendation would be that we go with the money ones. I think tax, tax duplication, protecting municipal funds are sort of two sides of a money issue. Um, I also think affordable housing, we very much need to, um, start a discussion, a dialogue with the county, because there's no way that we're going to be able to raise enough money to do anything effective on our own. So we need to start that discussion. And there are some issues, I mean, I would, I would have no objection to, to mentioning all of these, but for example, the, you have to remember that this is the FY09 budget, which means that the money doesn't even start until a year from, to, until next July.
Okay, it says '08. I know, I'm, I'm sorry, I had to make a correction. It's the FY0, it's the first and the beginning of the FY09 process.
And, and so for example, Piney Branch is an important issue...
It's hard for me to think in those terms.
It's, it's an hour and hour issue.
Piney Branch is an important issue, but I don't want to wait until July of '09 to start dealing with it. I think we need to do, do some serious things in the current fiscal year.
Can you make that same argument for the metro? Will the metro take...
The, the metro is probably another similar issue, that we need to make some very strong, um, headway prior to next July. So it might be, we would, in this particular context, not saying those two issues aren't important, but we might need to deal with them in a different context in order to be most effective.
My, my sense is that, uh, from, uh, discussions I've had with the city manager, that the, uh, bridge improvements are something that may be, uh, fairly simple to do from, uh, a county staff perspective, but it might be worth reinforcing that, uh, this is something that, uh, can go forward with some, uh, limited impact on their budget, but will make a big difference.
I don't know if I would say it has limited impact. What, uh, Councilmember Williams is alluding to, some conversations I've had with the county staff, um, in part through the tax duplication, uh, discussions that are going on. Uh, currently in the formula, the council may recall that there's a minimal amount of money that flows through municipalities for bridge maintenance. There's really nothing in the current rebate formula that addresses the situation that we find ourselves in, is when you have major, um, structural repairs that are needed to bridges. So I've had some discussion with the Road Maintenance Subcommittee that I'm chairing about having the county actually take on that responsibility. It's really not a question of service delivery or any differences between the county and the municipalities, it's really a matter of public safety. And it really is a complicated process of getting through the federal funding system, and I think certainly the, uh, county staff is much more geared up to do that than any of the municipalities. Um, the members of the Subcommittee, um, seemed very sympathetic to that argument. Um, I've had some, a discussion last week with the individual who heads up the preparation of the CIP for DPWT. Um, it was kind of news to him, apparently there was sort of a coordination problem during the summer of getting that information to him. Um, one of the reasons I would ask that it probably remain on the city's priority is one of the, our bridges will probably likely need repairs within the next one to two years that are probably at a minimum totaling several hundred thousand dollars. Um, if we can get it into the county process, it needs to be a priority in their FY09 CIP because it would probably need to kick out some of their projects that are currently in that slot, or at least, um, the county council would need to appropriate additional funds to that fiscal year.
And, and I was saying, keep it in to reinforce that...
Yeah, I would.
This is something that will be new on their radar.
It, it would be very new, it would be a major shift in philosophy, um, and I think we need to raise it at the county council level, certainly as well as the staff level.
Yeah. Yeah.
It seems to me that the ones that really need to have county council attention would be the two money issues, the protecting municipal funds and the tax duplication, the bridge issue, which sounds like it really does need it, New Hampshire Avenue and the affordable housing. Particularly on affordable housing suggesting a working partnership with the county to deal with affordable housing, since we seem to be carrying the load right now. So I would, I guess, not saying the other things aren't important, and certainly we could, and some people do add at the end of the testimony also these items, but in terms of the things that we say we want to put priority on, that maybe those should be the priorities. Does that make sense? Okay. Anything else? All right, well, I--
Thank you very much.
The, I appreciate the staff and the members of the audience who stayed here till the very bitter end, and we got through a lot of very important issues this evening, and if there's nothing else, we're adjourned.